Commissioners, good evening. Good evening, everyone. Let's, uh, let's prepare to begin, uh, this meeting of the Clovis City Commission. We'd like to welcome everyone here. Very excited about, uh, the, the presentations that we have this evening, and we have several items on the agenda, which, uh, the public is interested in, so we'd like to thank everyone for your interest. And, uh, we'll begin tonight's meeting with a prayer, which I'll lead us in, and then we will honor our flags. If you would, please stand with me. Let's bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings that you give us every day. Thank you, uh, especially this evening for the blessing of, uh, this wonderful community that you've called us all to, to live, work, and serve. And we ask that you would lead us to be good stewards and wise managers of the city's resources. And Lord, bless each person here, and, uh, Lord, we ask that, uh, you would send rain. God, we, we make our plans, but ultimately, we're looking to you to provide, and we pray that you would provide and, and send rain to our city and this whole area. We ask these things, and I ask these things in the sweet name of Jesus, amen. Join me in honoring our country's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with due justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, that's the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. With that, our meeting is called to order. Would the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Bryant.
Here.
Commissioner Casaus.
Here.
Commissioner Porter.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Here.
Commissioner Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Rowley.
Here.
Commissioner Paula.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Here, thank you, Ms. Reyes. Commissioners, next is approval of the agenda. At this point, you've had the opportunity to review the agenda. Do you recommend rearranging or removing any of the items?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move our retail strategies update to receipts of petitions and communications, please.
Certainly. We will put the retail strategies update, uh...
Number one.
Number one, under receipts of petitions and communications, and move everything else down there. Any other suggested changes?
Y'all make a motion to approve with the change.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, uh, to approve the agenda with the one change, and the second from Commissioner Casaus. Commissioners, please vote. And with one commissioner absent this evening, the vote is seven to zero. The motion is carried, thank you. Next is approval of minutes. In your packet, you have the minutes from the May 5th, 2022 meeting. If you've had a chance to review those, are there recommended corrections? Or is there a motion to approve as they are printed?
Some move.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes as they are printed from Commissioner Garza, second from Commissioner Casaus. Commissioners, please vote. The vote is unanimous, the motion is carried, thank you. Next in the agenda is recognition of, uh, of visitors. And again, we'd like to, uh, welcome, uh, all of you to tonight's meeting. I wanna, um, also acknowledge that we have, uh, folks of you online and, and, and on, uh, television. And so, we appreciate everyone's interest in your city's business this evening. We look forward to hearing from you when we reach the point in the agenda that you're here to share with us. Uh, next is proclamations, awards, and presentations. Couple of planned items there today. We are also, um, uh, going to have a, an announcement, uh, by the same folks who are receiving the proclamation that is first. So, uh, presentation of proclamation proclaiming June 2nd through June 4th, 2022, as the 50th Annual Pioneer Days Celebration. And, uh, who do we have here to share with us about Pioneer Days? Mr. Hadley, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Hadley, thank you, welcome.
Well, we'd like to thank the, you, Mr. Mayor, the City Commission, for the recognition you gave us with the proclamation tonight. We are having our Pioneer Days Rodeo, June the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at the Curry County Event Center. There'll be other events going on throughout the week, and then on Saturday morning, we'll have our parade here at 10 o'clock on Main Street. But, uh, we'd just like to thank the city for all the help they've given us in the past as well. They've all been a great partner with us to help put on this event, and it takes a, it takes a lot of peo-, a lot of people involved to make an event like this happen. And we appreciate the community, not only the commissioners, but the local businesses in town that support us all through the year. And we just hope that we can support all our local businesses the same way during the year.
Yes, sir, sounds good. Well, we're, we're excited, uh, to, uh, participate in this small way and I'll, and look forward to the rodeo. I hope it's a great event.
We look forward to all of you coming.
Yeah. Would you, uh, introduce who you have with you, just so everyone knows?
Oh, this is Jeff Lynn, I just saw him behind me. This is Jeff Lynn and, and John Montano. I thought it was Kevin Clements. He's also a longtime member of our group.
Very good. Great, well, thank you, uh, for that. I do have the, the proclamation here, and I would love to share it with you and everyone else this evening. But, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, our commissioners, any comments on your part?
No, always a great event, thank you.
Thanks for the hard, hard work, guys. It's always good.
It is a lot of hard work, and John has been doing it ever since I can remember.
Very well, I, I'd like to share the proclamation. Whereas Pioneer Days is the community's celebration of the grit and skills of those who settled the eastern plains of New Mexico. Clovis's first Pioneer Day Celebration took place June 5th, 1935, to commemorate the 30-year history of Clovis. How about that? And whereas the Curry County Mountain Patrol, uh, has been sponsoring the event since 1943, and this year, the Pioneer Days Celebration will include the 50th Annual PRCA Rodeo. Organizers expect over 10,000 people to attend the three-day professional rodeo Cowboys event, scheduled for Thursday, June 2nd, uh, Friday, June 3rd, and Saturday, June 4th, at 7:30 PM at the Curry County Event Center. And whereas this year's Pioneer Days Rodeo Breakfast will be held at 7:00 AM, Friday, June 3rd, 2022, at the Brick Street Warehouse. The Pioneer Days Parade will be held at 10:00 AM on Saturday, June 4th. And the theme for this year is 50th Anniversary Celebration. Parade awards will be announced immediately following, in front of the courthouse on Main Street. Whereas the 50th Pioneer Days Celebration also includes the Little Buckaroo Rodeo and the crowning of the 2022 Pioneer Days Rodeo Queen. Now therefore, I, Mike Morris, Mayor of Clovis, and on behalf of the City Commission, declare June 2nd through June 4th, '22 in, um, in Clovis as 50th Annual Pioneer Days Celebration. And I urge all citizens of Clovis and surrounding area to join me in kicking up my heels. Wrote this. Kicking up my heels and enjoying some down-home western fun and attending the Pioneer Days PRCA Rodeo Parade and other Pioneer Days activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Montano has a, an announcement, uh, please go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I failed to get this on the meeting, or on the agenda, sorry about that, Claire. But, uh, the Joint Veteran Council will be having Memorial Day Celebration on May the 30th. So, we want y'all to be aware of it, come out and join us. On the Saturday before the Memorial Day, we'll put out flags on all military veterans' graves. If anybody knows of some veteran that the flag hadn't been placed on there, let us know. We'll make sure that we can get a flag on there, okay? Uh, one of the, uh, uh, members, or a member of, uh, political, uh, agenda, uh, Fernandez from, uh, District, uh, State Representative.
You must be talking about Congresswoman Teresa Ledger Fernandez.
Yes, yes. Fernandez, she is supposed to be here for that on there. But, uh, we'll have a nice celebration. Hope all you guys can make it, you're invited to it. And on, uh, Monday, following the Memorial Day, that'd be Tuesday, we will pick up all the gray, uh, flags from there, so. Uh, you know, it just, uh, Joint Veteran Council's been doing that for quite a while, and we just want y'all to be aware of it and come out and join us.
Sounds great, thank you for that, thanks for that.
What time was that? What time was that again?
Uh, 10 o'clock. That Monday morning.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Mr. Montano.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. We have a second presentation scheduled, and it is Great American Cleanup 2022. And Ms. Kelsey Knight with the city, and perhaps Ms. Vicky Reyes with the city, are going to share with us on this.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioners. Um, on Saturday, May 7th, we held the Great American Cleanup, where, um, different members of the community can come and help clean up litter around different roadways in Clovis. We had a ton of volunteers, um, and so it was very exciting. Uh, this program and event is funded through, uh, the New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Program, which we partner with every year to help us have funding for various parks beautification and litter prevention projects. And so, I'm very excited to report how our event went. Um, so we had approximately 206 volunteers on Saturday, um, which I am really happy with the turnout, especially because it was Mother's Day weekend. We have prom that night, there was a big state track meet, so I am very satisfied with 206. I think we also had about 10 teams total, and a lot of families, which was really cool. A lot of kids and just individuals. Um, that's kind of rare with us having these events. We have a couple of individuals come, but we had a ton that they said, you know, stick me somewhere. I don't care where I go, they were calling me saying, I finished that route, what else can I do? Um, so we had great volunteers. At the event, we collected approximately 238 bags of trash within four hours, which is really great. Um, along various roadways in Clovis, from MLK, US 6084, Lono Estacado, um, the Civic Center parks, all over the place. Um, the Clovis Regional Landfill also offered free dumping over this, uh, weekend that we had the event, and that also included tires, which is very important for us to collect tires within our community, and residents could go and dump them for free, which is really nice. Um, together with the cleanup and with the weekend that there was free dumping at the landfill, we collected 78.15 tons of municipal solid waste, and that also included 71 tires. So, we made a big impact in cleaning up the Clovis community. IT, if you could go to the next slide, it's not working anymore. We would like to thank our partners who helped us with this event. Daylight Donuts packed individually, um, in little baggies, 200 donuts for us to give to volunteers. Um, Foxy's Drive-In, Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, thank you so much for providing chips for us. Mix107.5 provided music and also advertising, um, for the event. And Wiener Schnitzel donated 250 hot dogs to our volunteers, which, thank you so much, Jim Haley, Wiener Schnitzel. Um, we appreciate that partnership. And our wonderful volunteers, you can see a picture of Mayor Morris, who cleaned up Main Street. Thank you so much for doing that, so many great volunteers, um, from the base. We had a team from Walmart come, uh, Yucca, National Honor Society, so many different volunteers. Also, thank you to members of the City Commission that came and volunteered. Um, thank you so much for, uh, really encouraging our volunteers and thanking them for coming out. Um, our Parks and Recreation Department and Public Works Department provides so much support for this event. We couldn't do it without them. And then our other city volunteers that helped with check-in, helped take pictures, helped with serving, um, breakfast and lunch to volunteers, thank you so much. So, for awards, through this event, we award the top three teams who collect the most trash. We were very fortunate this time, um, because COVID restrictions have lifted. We were able to have an award ceremony right at the event, and so they all got a little plaque that says first, second, and third place, and so hopefully, that's something that they, um, cherish and have in a, uh, trophy cabinet somewhere. Um, so just wanted to go through those. Third place was Airman Leadership, um, from Cannon Air Force Base. They had 47 volunteers, they were a humongous group. They just filled the space that we have in Parks and Rec. Um, they cleaned up US 6084 from Norris Street all the way to Sugar Beet, and they collected 45 bags within two hours. They really got busy, and we thank them so much, um, for coming out. They were so excited, and they said, any volunteer opportunity that you have for us, we would love to participate. So, that was really great. Second place was Team Walmart. We were super impressed with this, this team. They only had nine volunteers, and they cleaned up along Lono from MLK to Prince, and they collected 48 bags of trash in four hours, just the nine of them. Um, so they were really great. And we, I had never seen them at an event before, and so really excited that they decided to have a team. And then first place, this is a group that comes to the cleanups almost every time. Um, it's a group from the base, we have 27 SOLRS and 27 SOMXS. They cleaned up along MLK from Grand to Lono Estacado. They had 15 volunteers, and within four hours, they picked up 56 bags of trash. So, they really got busy, we appreciate it so much, and, um, I think providing awards gives a lot of incentive. I have, uh, teams come up to me, like, what do we know, do you know how many bags we collected yet? I'm like, we're waiting, we're waiting for the truck to get back. Um, so really great that we can provide them some incentive to come out and pick up the trash. And I believe that's all that I have, um, if anybody has any questions?
Yep, just, just positive comments. Uh, what a wonderful event, and, and, and behind all events like this, you have city employees, you know, giving of their time, going the extra mile, making it, making it possible. But you, you described the, the, uh, the dynamic of, you know, families coming and participating, and it just, it just was a fun event, and, uh, it, it just seemed easygoing and, and, uh, just a great community event put on by the city, thank you.
Well done, Kelsey.
Thank you, Kelsey. Thank you very much.
I'll just mention, events like this don't come together without everybody working together. And I just want to take a minute and thank staff for all the hard work they did on putting this together, as well as the, uh, volunteers that came out to, uh, pick up trash, and all the city employees that, you know, gave their time to come out and, uh, you know, help with the pickup.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Well, I, I want to say a couple of things. Um, first off, I think this is a huge example of, of what Clovis is. The, the different entities from all over, from Cannon Air Force Base to corporate businesses, to private businesses, all, and the city coordinating this and coming together and making it something, and for, for a good cause, for a good result. Um, beautification of Clovis is fantastic, but really what shines to me is, is the efforts from the city and from the community. It is a perfect example of what Clovis really is. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey. On then, to the next section, which is receipts of petitions and communications. And, uh, prior to approving the agenda, we moved retail strategies update to item one here. So, uh, we have the folks from retail strategies here, this is Mr. Chris Bontrager. Mr. Bontrager, welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Um, I think she took off with the clicker.
Okay. Doesn't work.
I'll wing it, I'll figure it out. Thank you, guys, for, uh, allowing us to be on the agenda this evening. I will, uh, I will try to make this quick, so I can really open it up for any questions. I know you have a long agenda this evening, but, um, with that being said, I'll go ahead and get started. Uh, yes, thank you. Um, so, as a reminder, um, I know, uh, many of you saw this last year, uh, but just as a reminder, um, just give you a quick, brief overview of kind of our process. And, uh, 'cause this, it's a cyclical process, it's always, uh, it's always going, and it's always updating. But when we initially start with the community, it starts with that initial market analysis, and, um, which leads into, uh, the strategic planning, which is then, um, of course, does deliver to the key working.
Mr. Bontrager.
Sir?
Just, just a moment. I failed, I, I should have, in, in introducing you and teeing this up, I should have explained, just for everyone's benefit. I think most of the commission, although we have some new commissioners, but for everyone's benefit, Retail Strategies is a company that we've engaged, uh, uh, through contract, uh, to do the, the work of retail recruitment, uh, to the city of Clovis, and, uh, fill the gaps that have been identified, uh, by the, uh, opportunity gap analysis that they've performed, uh, on our market. And we're about halfway through a three-year work.
Yes.
On this, and, um, at this point, I think you've been to Clovis personally, uh, several times, even though you've got, got going during COVID and, and, and all of those things. And so, I just thought it'd be important that everyone understand that we're hearing an, a, a report from a contractor, uh, with the city of Clovis that's doing the work of retail, uh, assessment of our market, as well as retail recruitment to our city. So, thank you, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you for the introduction, and I'll take the blame, I got too excited to get go, to get going with the presentation. Um, but as the mayor said, we are a national retail recruitment firm. Uh, what, basically, how we work is, we work as an extension of the city's economic development efforts. And, uh, we do that by, uh, really a couple of things. We, uh, we, we do that through analysis of the demo, uh, demographics and data of the community, through analysis of the actual real estate. So, we are, uh, we, we are working hand-in-hand with property owners along your commercial real estate corridors. We keep a property database or a catalog of those commercial, uh, opportunities. And so, we're working with, uh, those property owners day-to-day. But then, we're also, the, the third leg of that is also, uh, identifying and targeting those brands and those retailers that should be in the market. So, um, that is actually the meat of what, uh, I was gonna talk about on the slide. But so, what all the, all of that comes together into our, uh, our planning process, and that plan is, once that plan is delivered, then it's proactive outreach. We're talking to property owners, we're talking to those brands, uh, we're rep, uh, a piece that I'll talk about in a few slides, we're representing the community at, um, commercial real estate trade shows, which I'll talk about here in a minute, but we have, uh, we actually have one coming up this week. The, the, uh, kind of the, the big granddaddy of them all, commercial real estate trade shows coming up on Sunday. And I'll, uh, actually talk about that. But as those results come in, when businesses go out, as businesses come in, those are, those are, uh, the, that plan's always changing, so it's always a, uh, it's always a cycle, and it's always a moving target. Next slide. So, um, I've got this broken down in a couple of different segments. This is very brief, but, uh, I have it broken down by data, talk about the real estate really quickly, and then we'll also talk about the prospects. So, uh, for those that were here last year, as you remember, and then for those that, uh, were not here last year, we will, uh, I'll discuss the customized trade area, what we're using to market the community. This, uh, this customized trade area, this is a, uh, actual customer draw based off of your, uh, the Lowe's here in Clovis. And the way that this is drawn is through a, uh, cellphone mobile tracking, uh, software. And what that means is, anyone that walks into the Lowe's, regardless of where they're from, they could be from Texas, a lot of these are from Texas. If, uh, you walk into the Lowe's and you have, uh, location services enabled on your smartphone, it sends up a ping to this, to a satellite, and this software company is going in and collecting these pings. When you go home at night, or when these customers are going home at night, and they lay down, their phone remains stationary for eight to nine hours, if they're lucky, then that, what it does, it sends up another ping, and what it, we're able to do from that is create a heat map of where those projected homes are. So, what this map shows here is, this trade area is created based off of those projected locations of the homes of the, the primary customers for your Lowe's. And so, what that does, we could do this for any business in the community, we do it for your primary draw. The reason, and, uh, the reason B is then we can accurately present to a prospective business or a prospective developer what the actual customer draw of a community is. You know, it's not just, it's not drive times, it's not guessing, it's a, an objective way to say, these are Lowe's customers, if you locate to next Lowe's, these customers are gonna be going to your store, they're gonna be crossing paths with your store, your location, or your restaurant. And so, it gives a, uh, really gives you a good advantage in the way that you can, uh, you can numerically, uh, justify the, those trade areas. So, next slide. So, based off of that custom trade area, this is, these are the, these are the data points, and I just have a couple of points here to show you as an example, but these are the data points within that trade area. Over the past year, so, uh, since the presentation last year, this, the trade area has remained the same, but the data points, the estimated population within that trade area has actually risen about 5,000. And then the growth rate, growth rate has remained about the same. And then you see, uh, the projected 2026 population is, uh, is roughly around, you're, you're gonna see about a three, uh, 3,000, uh, population improvement. The average age of both male and female has actually dropped since last time, which is actually a very good thing for the community. You know, and the lower we can get those average ages, it's showing, it's showing community growth, it's a sign towards community growth. You have, uh, you have people coming into the community, you have people having children in the community, so very positive. Of course, one of the biggest, uh, if not the biggest factor in your, uh, your average ages remaining low, of course, is the Air Force Base, having young, the young service members coming in, that, that certainly increases that, uh, or decreases that average age, very positive for a community. Next slide. So, uh, just a quick overview of the real estate. As a reminder, uh, of course, in a public meeting, we can't discuss anything, any specific details with any specific negotiations or transactions with a property, but we can give you a high overview, esp- and then also with retailers, so no specific retail names. But I did want to give you a, a brief overview of what we're looking at from a real estate standpoint, and then I actually have a couple, uh, a couple examples of some marketing aerials that we've actually created for some sites, but I can't delve any deeper into anything with the real estate other than that. So, what you're looking at here, this green pin map, this is actually a snapshot of the database or catalog that we, uh, that we maintain. So, each one of these green points is a commercial real estate, um, opportunity that was identified, um, initially when we toured the community, and then also it's been updated through our work with, uh, with Claire and Justin, and then also subsequent visits. So, that's high level, uh, those are high-level opportunities that we're, uh, keeping track of. Next slide. So, as I mentioned, I, I've got a couple, I want to show you a couple of examples of some aerials of some sites that we are, uh, that we are actually marketing. The, uh, this is, this is, of course, not all-inclusive, but just a snapshot of a couple. So, this is the, uh, the shopping center, The Village on 21st Street. I know it's, it's a little hard to see with the, with the resolution on the screen, but I just want to show you an example of, uh, some of the materials that are going out. Next slide. And then here is a, another one, this is, uh, the site right across the street from the Fairfield Inn and Suites. And then, key points to see on these, um, on these aerials are, we, you take, what we do is we take some of those key demographic points or those key, um, those key information markers and place those on here, and these are actually aerials that we are talking day-to-day and using in a day-to-day basis with, uh, with prospects and, uh, real estate brokers. And what it does is it gives them a quick snapshot, 'cause what they wanted, the, what they want to see is, they want to see the site, they want to see the, um, the competitors, they want to see the national brand, uh, national credit brand makeup that surround the site, and then they also want to see that, uh, that additional, uh, those initial data points. So, it gives them a quick snapshot of what So it gives them a quick snapshot of what they're looking at. So, next slide. This is the final example, but I just want to show you, because of course you, you guys know better than anyone that the North Plains Mall is one of the, is, is, is one of the key shopping areas in the community. And of course it is a focus. And what you're looking at here, these, these highlighted points are, these are highlighted vacancies in the North Plains Mall. And the, and this has that same initial information. So, next slide. So getting into the actual breakdown of retailers, this is the current status of where we are. We currently have 38 interested prospects in the community. And this is, this is different, differing degrees of interest. I did break down a couple of, into separate categories for those degrees of interest, but some of these are closer than others. Some of them want to be in the community, but they need franchise operators. So, but that's all inclusive. So you have 38 that are actively looking or interested in the community. Going from the top, so close to the finish line, I wanted to break this down because we, these four retailers are significantly closer than the, the rest on the breakdown. So I wanted to highlight that. So within the, I would, without, you know, without giving a specific timeline, because if I gave you a timeline, I would, I would be lying. I can't promise dates, I have no control over these transactions. But within, I, I would say probably within the next six months, you're probably going to see if not one or two or all of the ones that are close to the finish line. Go ahead and finish up and then at least start under construction. So you have one quick service restaurant, two clothing, two clothing stores and then one general merchandise store. So one thing I want to point out as far as what kind of economic impact that'll have on the community. So just based off your sales tax, your local sales tax at 3.06 or 3.0625. So an average fast food restaurant or quick service restaurant does about a million and a half a year. And so just a quick calculation, what that looks like for a community, per, for you guys, per year, one new quick service restaurant in the community produces about 45,000 in sales tax back to the city. And then if you multiply that by, for varying sizes of commu, of businesses coming in, if you multiply that, so for every 10 million in sales tax or in sales that retailers or restaurants will do in the community, that for every 10 million, you're looking at around a 360,000 direct return back to the city based off of that local sales tax. So just wanted to point that out. And then the total interested, this includes the, the ones at the top, but this is just a breakdown of the total interested of those, those 38 interested prospects. So you can get a snapshot of where those, what those categories are. So, next slide. So as I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, that this week we are actually going to Las Vegas, we're leaving on Sunday to, to go to the conference. This is a huge benchmark for us and really the industry, because this is the first time that this conference is back in full in person in its original date and time in May that, since before COVID. So conferences finally returned back to somewhat normal back in December. The first conference that the international shopping, international council, council of shopping centers, the first conference that they had back in person was in December and you had roughly around 10,000 people at that show. Normally you have about 40,000 people that attend this conference. So if that shows you what that looked like coming out of COVID. This one is projected to be about 22 to 25,000. So it's, it's getting back up there. They've pulled all the restrictions, all of the COVID mandates. So it's, it's, it's starting to slowly get back to, to its, to its form. And so we're excited about that and there's a lot of energy around this, around this conference here in the next week. Next slide. And so I'm almost, I'm almost done, I'll open it up for questions, but just as a reminder, we, we as a company, one of the things that we provide to clients is that we do monthly webinars and information sessions. So, and we, we have topics, we've had interviews with people that have discussed a myriad of different topics, almost everything under the sun. So, well, I say all that to say is if you would like to, if you're not, if you're not getting our subscription emails, if you'd like to be added, you'll get alerts for these webinars if you're interested. If you're, if you would like to go back and see past ones, there's, I think there's hundreds of them on there covering all these topics. If you register for it, you can actually go back and look at the, the old inventory of webinars, but I just want to point that out if anyone is interested in really learning more and getting, just getting more information on the, on the topic of commercial recruitment. And, next slide. And with that, that is all I had as far as the presentation and I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bontrager. Very, very good presentation. Thank you for the work that you're doing on behalf of the city. And commissioners, mayor pro tem, any questions, comments?
No, I'm just very excited to hear that you have some prospects coming. So that's great to know. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, very.
Do you ever provide information to us as to who you're having a conversation with as far as retail establishment?
Yes, sir. So all of the, all the confidential information goes to the city manager's office. Yes, sir. I, like I said earlier, I can't just, I can't use it on public side. Yes, sir.
Wanted to make sure we're getting that information.
Yes, sir.
Through staff. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? I hope the conference goes well and you're able to make some, make some good headway in, in getting even more prospects for Clovis. And I guess you know, but on the agenda tonight is actually a, a, a policy issue that's going to help us, if approved, execute on, on incentivizing retail development. And so pending the approval of that, we'll, I'll circle back and let you know what we have in place.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bontrager.
Thank you, guys.
Very well. Next, we have an introduction from our parks director, Mr. Russell Hooper. Going to introduce us to a new member of the, of the team, the new Clovis Zoo Director.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity. Uh, Mike, if you'd start the slideshow? No. Sorry. No, um, just wanted to introduce our new zoo director. Exhaustive Search came to us from Los Angeles. Before that, he worked a zoo in Laos. He's worked in the Houston Zoo, San, San, one of them, San Francisco, one of them sands out there in the west. Like I said, he came from the tropical rainforest, was the last in Laos. And so we're trying to get him to bring some of that with him for the rain, because I appreciate those prayers earlier. We're really working on that rain. But no, he's came to us, he is energetic, he's ready to go and he has started the zoo on Monday. And yeah, I'd like to take all y'all the opportunity, come see him, come meet him, come visit him, let him show you around the zoo and show you what we got.
Sounds good.
I just wanted to introduce it. I didn't know if anybody had any questions. He's ready, he, he will present in the presentation.
I understand you're elephant certified.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say certified, but yes, there actually is an elephant school that I did attend. Um, I, I, I worked with elephants for quite some time, worked with, you know, wild elephants in Laos.
So welcome aboard.
But I don't expect elephants coming here to the zoo, unfortunately.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
I know a couple of weeks ago, we had the Cabinet Secretary of Tourism and we toured the zoo and she was very, very impressed. She said, I can see why you guys have the second largest zoo in the state. So she had nothing but kudos for, for everybody and the help. So thank you.
I had a tour from, uh, from Russell here on his phone as, as he walked me around the grounds and, and I thought the exact same thing. And as I round out my first week here, you know, I, I have identified a couple of areas for improvement, you know, for, you know, to improve the guest experience, some for our habitat, some for wildlife, some are short-term, midterm, long-term. But already, I mean, I mean, the zoo looks, you know, phenomenal. The exhibits are, some of them are way bigger than some of the large metropolitan zoos that I've worked in. So it's been a great job here for my predecessors and hopefully I have some positive changes to make and you all, all like them.
Awesome.
Well, we're certainly glad to meet you. And do I pronounce your name? Is it Mr. Lechner?
It's Damian Lechner.
Lechner, well, welcome to Clovis, welcome to the city of Clovis. You, you came here from Los Angeles, you've said you've been here a week. How are you doing?
Well, like I've been saying all week, I'm loving the lack of traffic. And I really, again, I mean, I haven't been here a very long time, but the sense of community is definitely much better than it is in Los Angeles. So I'm happy to be a part of the community here.
Yeah, well, we're happy to welcome you into the community and we know you're gonna, gonna love it here and we look forward to all the good things you'll do at the zoo. Great meeting you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have FEMA Region Six Youth Community Preparedness Award, Teen CERT. And Mr. Hering is, is not getting up, or is he getting up? Mr. Hering is our emergency management director and this is really a, a great, a great honor, very, very exciting and, and certainly Mr. Hering shares in it. But we have Zachary, is it?
Wachter.
Wachter.
Yes, sir.
Zachary Wachter is here with the state of New Mexico and we'll give you the floor, sir.
Thank you. So as, as the mayor said, my name is Zach Wachter and I, I do want to thank all of you this evening for sharing your time with me. I'm here to formally recognize Dan Hering and the Clovis High School Teen Community Emergency Response Team, also called CERT, on behalf of the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, as well as FEMA Region Six. In 2017, Clovis High School AFJ ROTC NM021 took the initiative to reach out to emergency manager, Dan Hering and expressed an interest in developing a teen CERT program. CERT is a program in which volunteers undergo nationally standardized training that allows them, when called upon, to easily integrate into the emergency response operations of a community, being able to perform a number of first response activities ranging from first aid, fire safety and suppression, and even light search and rescue. NM021 cadets and cadre lived out their core value of service before self by establishing a brand new community emergency response team. Within two years of its inception, NM021 CERT was such a success that they opened membership up to all Clovis High School students, confident that the foundation they laid would serve as a platform to continue to build upon in their school and their community. Not one to settle, Dan set a high bar for the CERT members and they rose to the challenge. In addition to their regular studies, the standardized CERT basic training and for the AFJ ROTC cadets, their curriculum as well. Clovis High School Teen CERT members must complete a number of FEMA training courses on the National Response Framework, the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command System. Team members were further encouraged to obtain their Technician Amateur Radio License, which several have, have done successfully. The Clovis High School Teen CERT has participated in multiple responder trainings and has deployed to three major community events. The team has donated 856 hours and one team member has even been credited with saving a life. As Dan described in his own words, the team assisted and is a force multiplier for our Fourth of July fireworks event in the Curry County Fair. Teen CERT teamed up with CFD and assisted with any response during those events. With the training we have done, we do have one student that has a life-saving credit having performed CPR on a family member. The cadets of NM021 identified an opportunity to make their community a safer place. They established something important and noble that extends beyond themselves. Through their hard work and self-sacrifice, they have made something from where there was nothing. Even as the cadets that began the team continue to grow and become leaders in their own chosen careers, the team that they created will remain to help protect their community and serve as a positive influence for those students who have the same innate desire to serve others. To Dan and the members of the Clovis High School Teen CERT, thank you for your service to your community. Your hard work and dedication set an example for all of us to strive toward. And now I'd like to play a brief message from our FEMA Regional Administrator, Tony Robinson. If we could cue the video, please.
Hello, my name's Tony Robinson. I'm the Regional Administrator for FEMA Region Six. It is my honor to acknowledge the outstanding contribution of Dan Hering and the Clovis High School Teen CERT Program in winning the 2022 Region Six Youth Preparedness Award. Dan has recognized the importance of leading the next generation and understanding disaster preparedness and making a difference in the community. This includes leading a teen CERT program and dedicating more than 856 hours to serving the community and deploying to three events, making the community safer, better prepared and more resilient. As we've seen in the ongoing historic fires across the state of New Mexico, it's more critical than ever to prepare for hazards and understand your risk. On behalf of FEMA Region Six, please join me in congratulating Dan on this achievement and we look forward to working with him as a continued partner in both the region and New Mexico Community Preparedness Program.
To, yes, yes, please. Well deserved, well. A couple of awards here, one from the state and, and the, the really good one though, the one from FEMA. That's the, that's the cool one. Dan, here you go, sir.
Thank you.
And here, here's the other one. Now you got your hands full. So appreciate you, sir. And.
Can I call my helpers up? Mr. Larry Nelson, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Lawson, come on up ladies. Larry? Come back, get over here. Get part of this. Oh, do we?
Yeah.
Where am I? Come on up, guys.
Oh, yeah. Let's give them a round of applause as well. Floor is yours, Mr. Hering.
So I, I, thank you, Zach. Thank you, FEMA for this award and honor. I could not have done it without these adults that were here also. Mr. Larry Nelson was instrumental and he actually hit me up the first few weeks I was in this job and says, we need to do this. I said, give me a few minutes to catch my breath and figure out what I'm doing first. And then I got approached by the high school to do this and we, and like I said, we took off running. Mr. Nelson actually was one of my first instructors to help us. So I'd like to thank him too. He was instrumental in this. My other two back there, they're from the, you still at Gaddis?
I'm at Gaddis, she's at Yuck.
Okay. Well, they, they came in a few years ago and we, we kind of partnered with a little bit of the middle school folks to help them and they were instrumental in, in bringing them in too, also to this program. So, and we have several other people, plus the students. We couldn't have done this without the students and, and the ROTC staff.
How, how many students?
At the height of this, before COVID, we had 29 students involved in this program.
Wonderful.
So.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Well, congratulations to the two, we have two students here this evening and, and want to offer our congratulations to you. Thank you.
And, and also I, I can't do this without the fire department, closed fire department. Their, their paramedics came in and helped us with the medical portion of this. They do get medical training, so it was very instrumental in making this a success.
Well, it's, it's just excellent and we're, we're very proud of you for accomplishing this, being recognized and, and you know, it's just, it's just a beautiful thing, you know, involving the high school kids and, and such a coordination to, to accomplish something really great. And to have, that have Zachary out to, to honor you, obviously this is a big deal and we, we congratulate you and we're proud of you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, we have one last planned presentation this evening that certainly promises to be a, a good one and a fun one. It's a communication from Texaco FFA. And Commissioner Paula, would you like to make introductions?
Absolutely. So I was contacted a couple of weeks ago by a representative from the Texaco FFA and Tex, or excuse me, FFA and 4H is very near and dear to my heart. I think it's one of the most wonderful leadership opportunities that children or kids and teens can be a part of. So tonight we are going to have a presentation by the Texaco FFA. They are competing in the state FFA competition, which is in early June in Las Cruces. I've actually been to this and it is unbelievable, the talent that is at this contest. the talent that uh is at this contest and they are going to be competing in the agriculture issues contest. And so this is something where they uh I believe have come up with this all by themselves and they are going to talk about an issue that would impact an ag business today. So there are six uh kids here from the Texaco FFA and I give you the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem Commissioners, for having these students. They've been working really hard. Yesterday was their last day of school and they came back today, so we're super proud of their dedication. And so what they have is they have a fake topic. It's a fake issue and you present it in a skit-like format, but it's supposed to highlight something that impacts your local community. And they actually get deducted at the state contest if they come up with a solution. So they're not allowed to present an answer to the problem and they each have to stay in character and present their role. So no breaking character. I do have one character. He is my son and and it's tough. He's he's tough.
This character.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's tough, but 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 the girls save them. The girls save them. Um and and so they they have to stay in character. They have to stay in their role despite their personal opinion because some of them have a different viewpoint than the character that they're playing. So we appreciate you having them here. We hope you enjoy it and please feel free to ask them questions. They've just started learning this very complicated subject of wind energy development and so this gives us something to research for the next week and a half, so so we definitely appreciate your insight.
My name is Kai Niu, the Curry County Manager, and I will serve as the moderator for this meeting.
My name is Libby Modestet and I am the Community Wind Developer. I'll be working with all the concerned parties to resolve all conflict.
My name is Mr. Hunt. I'm a farmer, dairyman, and private property owner. I'm against all forms of government red tape. Private property is a constitutional right that must be protected.
My name is Liz Lakin. I represent, I'm a homeowner and I represent a thousand concerned citizens of Curry County. We depend on our locally elected officials to protect our homes and property values. Curry County must adopt ordinance protecting their citizens from these twenty-five.
My name is Hannah Helmer and I am the Chief Operating Officer at Southwest Cheese Plant. Regulation stifles private business and economic growth. Businesses must have the ability to partner with renewable energy developers to reduce costs and meet our sustainability objectives.
My name is Elizabeth Elam and I am the Commanding Officer at Cannon Air Force Base. This wind energy center will have a substantial impact on our special operations. The county should support a state energy renewable siding authority.
Thank you for meeting with me before the Curry County Commission meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to gather information concerning the two hundred thirty megawatt wind energy center that will supply energy to Southwest Cheese Plant. The energy center is located within twelve miles of Cannon Air Force Base and close to Curry County's newest residential neighborhood. Curry County officials have often viewed wind energy as a private property right. However, the location of this wind farm is strongly opposed by the concerned citizens of Curry County and Cannon Air Force Base. On Tuesday, the commission will determine whether private property or whether wind turbine siding remain a private property right or is it a broader community concern? First, I would like to hear from the Community Wind Developer. Ms. Modestet, thank you for being here today.
Good morning, Ms. Niu. I am a community wind developer with a long history of working with industrial businesses to reduce their carbon emissions. Southwest Cheese is an industrial user of electricity and would like to transition seventy percent of their energy portfolio into clean energy. We are proposing to install a hundred two-point-three megawatt turbines within a sixty-two mile area. We have agreements with all of the impacted landowners. Everything is in order and we're ready to proceed.
Ms. Niu, my name is Dr. Hunt. I'm a private property owner and serve as a spokesman for the fifteen local farms and dairies. We have all agreed to host the wind turbines on our property. Each turbine will take up one-point-five acres of land and we have worked with Ms. Modestet carefully to site the wind turbines. As a result, the turbines will have little to no impact on our farming and dairy operations. All landowners have agreed to a fifty-year wind energy lease.
Ms. Niu, my name is Liz Lakin. Not all impacted landowners have agreed to this wind farm. I am a representative for the Curry Concerned Citizens of Curry County. We have a petition signed by over a thousand residents opposing the location of this wind farm. The wind farm would be located less than within one-half mile of the newest subdivision in Curry County. We do not find it fair that a few people profit at the expense of so many of our other community members. Curry County does not have a single ordinance in place to help to address wind turbine siding. This means that a wind turbine can be placed directly next to a house. Our residents should not be subjected to these towers, their blank flashing lights, or constant points.
Ms. Lakin, our company has successfully completed over a hundred wind development projects. We have adopted policies to ensure that turbines are set back from homes and public roads. We also try to secure a half-mile buffer around the wind development to reduce the impact upon neighboring landowners. As a policy, we don't locate any wind turbines within twenty-five hundred feet of a home. Additional regulation will interfere with future wind development projects. Wind projects also bring substantial economic benefits to the local communities. This development will bring more than a hundred million dollars of locally sourced construction jobs, eighteen onsite personnel during operation, and will provide millions of dollars in community benefits and taxes to not only the city, the county, but the local school districts as well.
Thank you, Ms. Modestet. We also have a representative from Southwest Cheese. Ms. Helmer, thank you for being here today. What is your company's perspective on this proposal?
As the Chief Operating Officer at Southwest Cheese Plant, we are excited to partner with the Wind Energy Company. Southwest Cheese is one of the largest cheese plants in the nation. We have over four hundred twenty employees. Our facility is five hundred ten thousand square feet and we produce five hundred eighty-eight million pounds of cheese every year. To reduce our carbon footprint and save money, we are revising our sustainability objectives. Our energy portfolio mix will be seventy percent renewable energy. For every six pounds of cheese processed, one kilowatt of energy is needed. This partnership will allow Southwest Cheese to expand the facility, hire additional employees, and meet our sustainability objectives.
Thank you, Ms. Helmer. Commander Elam is here today to discuss the impact of the Wind Energy Center on Cannon Air Force Base. Ms. Elam, could you please provide Cannon Air Force Base's perspective on this matter?
Hi, I am Elizabeth Elam, the Commanding Officer at Cannon Air Force Base. Cannon Air Force Base supplies the is the single largest employer in Curry County. We supply two thousand five hundred Curry County residents with jobs. This wind energy center is only twelve miles away from Cannon Air Force Base. The location will have a substantial impact on our special operations, aircraft flight training, our testing, and our radar technology. Because of this lost airspace, we could possibly lose our future assignments and the base can even close. Cannon Air Force Base is requesting that there's a twenty-five mile buffer around military installations, which will require wind developers to work with a state renewable energy siding authority.
Commander Elam, I appreciate your taking the time to come to our meeting today. Mr. Hunt, what is your perspective on Commander Elam's proposal?
Ms. Niu, we support Cannon Air Force Base. However, a twenty-five mile buffer and additional state oversight takes away from our private property rights. Private property is a fundamental right. The military has never paid for the use of airspace above my property. The Fifth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution states that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Nor shall private property be taken for public use without due compensation. The government cannot take away my private property.
What about the property rights of the concerned citizens of Curry County? Who's going to compensate us for the lost value of our homes because of this wind farm? A half-mile buffer isn't nearly enough to protect our homes from the lights or noise of this wind farm. The wind farm should be located somewhere else. Lincoln and San Miguel Counties already have zoning ordinances in place to protect their citizens. Curry County should do the same.
Ms. Lakin, thank you for providing the county ordinances that have been passed by other counties. I'll make sure these get to the Commissioners for review.
Ms. Niu, while I appreciate the county's consideration of a zoning ordinance, zoning will not provide adequate protection for military installation. Federal research and development accounts for about one in ten percent of all jobs in New Mexico. Given the Russia-Ukraine conflict, protecting the military is even more important. Military preparedness protects the security of our nation. Wind turbine siding within a twenty-five mile buffer should be approved at the state so that all military impacts can be considered.
Ma'am, we do not need another government authority telling us what we can't we can't do with our land. I oppose all zoning, state approvals, and any other form of government red tape. Private property owners have paid for the land. We've paid taxes and we have contributed to the economy. The farming and dairy industry is the largest economic producer of all agricultural products. We contribute six hundred and six million dollars to the local economy. Wind turbine payments will help those in agriculture hedge against fluctuating commodity prices and rising input cost.
We do not need another permitting process. As you can see from the turbine layout, our company has secured a half-mile buffer around the project. No turbines are within twenty-five hundred feet of a home or a public road. Further, an effective process is in place to protect military installations. In two thousand and ten, the United States Congress created the Department of Defense Siding Clearinghouse to address the potential impacts of renewable energy development. The clearinghouse has reviewed thousands of projects and the vast majority have had minimal impact on military operations.
Ms. Niu, the DOD clearinghouse is a good start, but it's just that a good start. The clearinghouse is not a regulatory authority. It's an informal review process which provides info to developers, but it does not mandate action. We need a state authority to evaluate the military impacts to approve wind developments. A county-by-county approach creates inconsistent rules and it does not look at the big picture.
Ms. Niu, I disagree. We cannot just create another cumbersome state process. We have enough mandates from the state. In two thousand nineteen, New Mexico passed the Energy Transition Act, which requires a fifty percent renewable energy standard by two thousand thirty and a hundred percent zero-carbon electricity by two thousand forty-five. To meet the requirements of the Energy Transition Act, businesses must be able to partner with developers to procure renewable energy from projects close to their businesses. Additional regulation will increase costs, stifle economic growth, and prevent future expansion of the cheese plant.
The Energy Transition Act is the exact reason we need a state-level authority to evaluate wind energy siding. The ETA will exponentially increase the number of wind turbines built in New Mexico. This unchecked rapid expansion will push out military installations, which in turn pushes out jobs, jobs New Mexico needs.
We can't depend on the state to protect concerned citizens. We have over a thousand residents opposing this wind farm. We urge our locally elected officials to adopt zoning that will protect our residents, neighborhoods, property values, and quality of life.
Private property rights are fundamental to democracy. We pay for our land. We pay our taxes. We contribute to the economy. Regulations take away from our private property rights.
Southwest Cheese is one of the largest cheese plants in the United States. This partnership will allow Southwest Cheese to expand the facility, hire additional employees, and meet our sustainability objectives. No additional regulation is needed.
This wind energy center will bring millions of dollars to Curry County. As a community wind developer, I work with all the concerned citizens and military installations to resolve conflict. No additional permitting process is necessary.
Thank you for bringing all these important considerations to our attention. Is wind energy siding a private property right or a community decision? Should siding decisions be made locally or at the state level? The commission is facing a very difficult decision. I appreciate everyone's time here and look forward to seeing you in New Mexico. Thank you.
I'm sure glad y'all don't have to actually decide this tonight.
Mr. Mayor, uh yes, we don't have to decide because this is not the county business, it's the city business. Uh Mr. Hunt, I I think we have a couple of attorneys here that might work with you. And I'm mad at the cheese plant because you didn't bring no cheese.
Who wrote the script?
Very nice.
Lorley.
Lorley.
It's great. It's great. Any questions for them?
Outstanding.
Just great discussion.
Very nice.
I have I have a question for you guys. Uh first of all, Commissioners, I think we all know who's going to be taking our seats one of these days.
Yep.
It's going to be these guys right here because you guys did an outstanding job and I wish you the best of luck in Las Cruces. But I do have a question for the farmer.
I have one, too. Troublemaker.
I can definitely tell you have the heart of of a farmer in you. So do you think that the farmer should be paid for losing his airspace? And how do you feel that that compensation should occur? Like, what should it be based on?
Well, I understand that. I understand the reason why I didn't pay them. I mean, it is for, I mean, they're keeping us safe. I mean, no matter how much I'm gonna hate them for the twenty-five mile buffer, all that, I do respect that they are keeping us safe. And I understand that them using our airspace, you know, making it, you know, a better place. America is keeping us free. So I do understand that, but we aren't being paid and they are using our land. They are trespassing. We're not doing the constitutional right. So there's like kind of two ways there, but my personal opinion is I would let them use it for free because they are keeping us safe.
Oh, you're such a a good farmer.
Chief.
Troublemaker here.
That's great, Mr. Hunt. I was actually going to ask you a question that I thought might lead you. Am I, I was going to appeal to that side. So it's interesting that you got there on her question, so that's that's cool. Good job, though. Good job to all of you.
Very good.
Awesome.
Good luck.
Yeah. Well, that was that was a treat and uh Texaco FFA, thank you for uh joining us and presenting that this evening.
No problem.
Thank you.
Too much fun. Okay. Commissioners, next, uh in the agenda, we have our consent agenda. As you know, as you know, this item is placed on the agenda so that you can, by unanimous consent, designate those routine agenda items that you wish to approve or acknowledge with one item. If any proposal does not meet with the approval of all commission members or if a citizen so requests, the item will be heard under the regular agenda. Thirteen items. The first is the motion to place all, I'll uh read two through twelve and thirteen is the motion to approve or acknowledge. Item two, request for approval of adoption of ordinance number two-one-six-seven dash twenty-twenty-two relating to the Unified Development Ordinance and amending code section seventeen forty-five zero eight zero D and section seventeen forty-five zero eight zero E of the sign code. Item three, request for approval of adoption of resolution number two-one-six-eight dash twenty-twenty-two pertaining to economic development, adopting an economic development plan, describing targeted qualifying entities and industry, establishing criteria to determine eligibility for aid, describing the information required in an economic development application, describing the procedure to verify the application information, describing the project participation agreement, describing the procedures for handling project revenues, identifying other revenue sources used to support economic development projects, identifying local resources available for the economic development projects, detailing the minimum benefits required for a qualifying entity, describing the safeguards of the public funds that will be used and repealing existing code sections. Item four, request for approval of adoption of resolution number two-one-six-nine dash twenty-twenty-two, changing an RS seven to an RS seven carport carport overlay. Address of said zone change is one oh nine Zia Place. Item five, request for approval of adoption of resolution number two-one-seven-one dash twenty-twenty-two pertaining, or excuse me, changing an RS seven residential, single-family district two and, or excuse me, and an RS seven MH residential family, single-family mobile home overlay district, residential multifamily mobile home overlay district. That was a, that's quite a, quite a item there. Uh the street address is one-twelve Diane. Street address is one-twelve Diane. Item six, request for approval of adoption of resolution number three-one-two-one dash twenty-twenty-two granting approval of a replat of ten-twenty-one South Oak of the Lockwood subdivision, Clovis, New Mexico, or Clovis, Curry County, New Mexico. Item seven, request for approval of adoption of resolution number three-one-two-two dash twenty-twenty-two granting approval of a replat of North Plains Mall subdivision lot one. Item eight, request for approval for City of Clovis to submit an application to New Mexico food security grant to assist the Curry Resident Senior Meals Association program and accept funding if awarded. Item nine, request for approval of lodger's tax quarterly disbursements for May two thousand and twenty-two. Item ten, request for approval to appoint Vince DeMaio to serve on the Water Policy Advisory Committee as a county representative. Item eleven, request for approval to appoint Randy Petty to serve on the Public Works Committee. Item twelve, request for approval to award ITB two-two zero-two-one-zero dash zero-one Seventh Street Reconstruction Phase Three to K Barnett and Sons Incorporated. That is your consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to place the indicated items on the consent agenda by unanimous vote.
So moved.
Motion to place by Commissioner Paula, second by Mayor Pro Tem Bryant. Commissioners, please vote. And the vote is unanimous and the motion is carried. I would now entertain a motion to approve or acknowledge all items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Garza, second from Commissioner Quesos. Commissioners, please vote. By a vote of seven to zero, the motion is carried, the consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Onto introduction and, and adoption of resolutions and ordinances. One item there this evening is request for approval of adoption of ordinance number two-one-seven-zero dash twenty-twenty-two, changing a res, or changing a central business district to industrial at four-fourteen Mitchell. And to advise this evening, Les Chancio. Mr. Chancio, thank you for being here. The floor is yours.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, commissioners, thank you. So what we have here is an attempt to change, like it says, central business district zone to industrial zoning. And the reason behind the industrial zoning is Mr. Brett Bowlby put this in place because he would like to use four-fourteen Mitchell for use as a cannabis grow. A few things that were said, I'm sure you reviewed the minutes from our P and Z meeting, but there's a few things that come to issue with that, mainly being the lot size for industrial. It's twenty thousand square foot, this, these lots there around seven thousand. And it doesn't meet our comprehensive plan and that's really the gist of it. I mean, if you have any questions, I'd be prepared to answer any of those.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Chancio, and I'm sorry to make you repeat, but what, what type of cannabis establishment is it?
Grow.
Grow, okay.
And so for, for us, a grow would have to be an industrial zoning.
Okay, correct. It would need to be an industrial zone. And, and then the other kind of key point that you made, if you would, just maybe only for my benefit, but restate the, the issue with the lot size?
The lot size, so industrial zones, for us, a minimum lot size is twenty thousand square foot.
Twenty thousand, okay. All right, and, and we're looking at a seven thousand square foot lot?
Right.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem, any questions?
And there is a fifty percent protest on this?
Fifty percent protest, yes, sir.
Okay.
I just have one question for Mr. Morris. Can you explain to us what spot zoning is? And would this be considered one of those instances?
I think it would be, so it's not finite, it doesn't depend on the number of lots necessarily. So spot zoning, just give me one second. So spot zoning, according to case law, it's not defined in statute, but according to Watson v. Town Council of Burna Leo, spot zoning refers to the rezoning of a small parcel of land to permit a use that fails to comply with a comprehensive plan or is inconsistent with the surrounding area, grants a discriminatory benefit to the parcel owner, and/or harms neighboring properties or the community welfare. Spot zoning is determined on an ad hoc basis depending on the facts and circumstances of each case. So certainly, the size of the parcel comes into play and the zoning around it. You know, is it, is it an island in the middle of a CBD zone? Or is there industrial zones that abut it? What's the purpose? Those are all factors that are supposed to be considered. And I think they were at the public hearing in planning and zoning.
Good, thank you. And, okay, thank you. And, and planning and zoning, obviously based on all of this, voted unanimously to reject the zone change, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Mayor Pro Tem, commissioners, any other questions?
No, I think with all the information that we've been provided and planning and zoning, not supporting it, I make a motion to deny the request.
Well, the applicant is here.
Okay. Oh, very good. Any, and we do have, I assume that's the applicant raising his hand, sir? Would you like to come forward? And appreciate it if you would give us for the record your name and address.
Yes, my name is Brett Bowlby, I live at eighteen oh nine Glen Arm Drive. I would like to make a motion to request this to be tabled and there's some discussion that needs to be had on the subject matter for the motion of changing the zoning. I actually finally got a copy of the UDO and looked through it myself and I found that the, the property is actually already zoned to permit low-impact industrial business, so it may not be required. Now, the issue that does come to play, which I need to go over with the zoning commission, is that the state has declared cannabis as an adult entertainment. Now, the CBD does not permit adult entertainment use. However, if we look at the original, Clovis original block sixty-four, lot six and seven, we all know what's there. That is an adult entertainment business. So we need to go back to the zoning board, get some definitions clarified. So I would like to request that this be tabled so that we can go back and have those discussions appropriately.
Okay, all right, appreciate, appreciate what you've, what you've had to say there. You, you know, you, you brought up some points that I'm thinking certainly have been addressed and considered as the Planning and Zoning Commission had to look at this. And then, and then you actually also brought up another point that the state deeming it adult entertainment and then it's not allowed in our central business district. I mean, I think that's, those are, those are some interesting points that, that you've made. Mayor Pro Tem, commissioners, questions for the applicant?
I think we have, no, not this time.
Okay.
And Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, if I may, what he, what he's referring to is, is our use categories. Our cannabis ordinance is, cannabis itself is a standalone use. And so in our ordinance itself, we said that grow operations or micro grow operations can only be located in industrial zones. And so inside the UDO itself, it breaks down different uses and what you can do across the top of the table, which is the zones themselves. And so he would still need to change the zone in order to complete and accomplish what he is requesting to do. So it's, unfortunately, it's a misinterpretation on, on his part of what the code it says itself, but he would, he would need the zone change.
I, I appreciate you, you know, giving us, giving us that technical perspective of how to interpret the code. I, it certainly didn't strike me as, as possible because I, we worked very hard on, on establishing a cannabis ordinance and, and within that ordinance, we, we, we have zones where certain things are allowed, certain things are not. So did, did you have, I'd like to?
So I, I would just like to state, if you look at section, chapter seventeen dot thirty dot zero-two dot zero, or yeah, dot zero-two dot D dot one, that's your definition of adult entertainment.
Are you in the cannabis ordinance? Are you citing?
I'm, I'm citing what you guys publicly have posted and available for me to access and use to research, which is the UDO that's posted online. If I'm using the wrong document.
I'm just not familiar with the, with the section number that was referenced. Is that within the cannabis ordinance or is that?
I can, I'll, I'll read this out to you. There, there are two key ones that are at question here. And it's seventeen dot thirty dot twenty dot F dot one, which is the definition of a low-impact industrial business. Granted, you guys may have defined cannabis itself as an industrial business, but the building shows that in CBD, it is approved so long as I can prove that it's a low-impact, along with moderate impact, those are approved. So the, the issue at hand really isn't industrial zoning as the adult use, but we all know that there's already adult entertainment in the zone.
So, so with all, with all, with all due respect, the, the argument you're, you're, you're making does not hold water because within the cannabis ordinance, we, we have, we have said that grow operations would only happen in the industrial zone. The property in question is not in an industrial zone.
There's no definitive definition that defines it outside that scope within your ordinance.
I, I think where, where you're reading is not even within the or, the cannabis ordinance.
Well, because the, well, I'm going based off of the New Mexico state. New Mexico state put it in the category of adult entertainment, right? And since cannabis business is an adult entertainment, a micro has to be operated out of a single facility. You can only have one location per function of the, of the business unit. And mine would be retail, manufacturing, and production. Now, your other producers such as Earl and Tom and them, they are vertically integrated. They are full-scale. But it's still on the burden of proof to show that I'm outside of the definition of low-impact and moderate impact because your definitions still state, so long as I'm not producing an odor, releasing particulates into the air, exceeding a fifty-four dec, or sixty-four decimal sound limit outside the property. So how am I confusing it? Because that is your definition in your ordinance.
Okay, within our, within the cannabis ordinance that this commission has approved, that a grow operation or a cannabis establishment of any type is not allowed in the central business district. So that, I mean, it couldn't be more plain.
On the grounds of what though? What's the bias toward it? Like there's obviously some sort of discrimination going on here.
We, we arrived at the decisions we did with the cannabis ordinance after several public meetings, after several works, study sessions.
Okay, so obviously, obviously there's a bunch of confusion and miscommunication and understanding here. So once again, I'm going to reiterate that this be tabled.
Okay, I don't, there's not actually much confusion and I, and I respect. I respect and appreciate what, what, what you've had to say. We have a motion for Mayor Pro Tem to reject, but I believe we had someone else from the public that may have wanted to say something. We had?
Mr. Burns, I believe.
And I, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not demanding that you come forward. I just know, I, you, you acted like you wanted to share something earlier. I wanted to give you that opportunity. Okay, sir, we have someone else from the public that, that wants to share. Judge Sean Burns.
Okay, my name is Sean Burns. I'm appearing here as a private citizen in my personal capacity only, not as a public elected official. I have a personal financial interest in what's going on here. My family has owned the two lots, lots one and two, since nineteen fifty-seven. Before that, it was a church there. I rise in opposition to the proposed zoning change and I was at the Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Meeting. I want first to make sure that everybody exactly understands where this is. I've drawn a little chart here. This is, shows Mitchell Street between fourth and fifth. There are twelve lots on that block. We're talking about the, that blue X is lot number two, which is Mr. Bowlby's proposed location. My building, the Burns Agency Building, been there for sixty-seven, seventy years, is lot one. The city owns lots three, four, five, and six because that was the old Houston Lumber Company building. And then I want to give that to you. Also, as far as there being fifty percent opposition, I think you have to consider more than just the number, but the, the, the exact people and the amount of property that they own. You will see that the Massey family has two and a half lots on Conley Street that are within a hundred feet of this building. That they're in opposition. Kyle Beckner, who has the building at General Insurance right across the street at five hundred Mitchell, is in opposition. Paul Reed, who owns the old post office building, spoke at the Planning and Zoning Commission, said that he's going to donate that building, the old post office building, to the High Plains Historical Society when they can get the legal work done and he wants to have families come visit in the old post office. So he is opposed to this on, on several grounds. There is a church on Conley Street, Korean full Baptist church, something like that, that's on here. I've not been able to contact them, the disabled American veterans, I've not been able to contact them. But everybody else in the areas, property owners, is opposed to this because it is spot zoning. It is, the, the two things that are relevant based upon Mr. Morris's description is that this use would be inconsistent with the use of surrounding areas. You can, you can see clearly from your own understanding where, where this is located. And number two, that it would harm the values of the surrounding businesses. Clovis downtown, the central business district, needs to improve, not go back. Last thing I'll say is that the industrial zoning was made for a purpose. In fact, we have a street called Industrial Park Drive out by the cemetery where the old Coca-Cola building is. That street is called Industrial Park Drive. I drove up Grand Street and back down Seventh Street the other day and I found thirty vacant buildings that are industrial in nature and size and are appropriate locations for industrial zoning like this. And that's, zoning is, is there for a reason. I, I enjoyed listening to the farmers' arguments about the zoning on the wind farm. This is not that complicated. What I'm doing here is not that complicated. So if you have any other questions, I would stand for questions.
I think that's a pretty, pretty, pretty exhaustive, Judge. Any, any questions? Okay, comment from David Bryant, Mr. David Bryant?
I, I don't see this as being discrimination against the business. I mean, it's, you know, cannabis has been legalized. The issue here is spot zoning and being an industrial business going in a?
Exactly, I have nothing against cannabis personally or otherwise.
I don't, I don't think it's, has anything to do with discrimination.
Any other?
No, I, I don't, I don't believe so. Thank you, Judge.
All right, thank you.
Chief Nola, can I call on you?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commission, I apologize. I've, I've let my city manager down. I've been fighting fires and was not aware this address was up for debate. So with any of the planning and zoning, please let me say that this is north of Fire Station One. And as, as Mr. Burns pointed out, that property owned by the city is a parking area and that is where our school buses unload for public education activity of the school kids. And we have public education activities on that lot. And, and I was not even thinking about this until the young man mentioned that it's considered adult entertainment and I don't think that will work very well for us.
Great point.
There is no other parking there for the school children. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate that.
I, I would respond to you and you're right, there is. So our public education activities are for preschool up through fourth grade. And when those buses come in with the kids, we get approximately sixty, seventy kids at one time with minimal teachers. And, and that in itself, just that walk would be a terrible hazard for those children. Do what?
Okay, ju, ju, just a moment, ju, just a moment. We're gonna, we're gonna- Um we're gonna, we're gonna give the floor to the person at at the podium. If you have something else to say, we'll uh we'll get you back up here in just a moment. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. If I would answer any questions, if they're posed.
Okay. Looks like we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'll I'll remind you, we have a motion to reject uh on this item. Any any other discussion?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to reject the changing of of the zoning for four fourteen Mitchell from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant and a second from Commissioner Rowley. Oh. I'll do my best. Is this, there we go. How's that? We have a motion to reject the um zone change uh for four fourteen Mitchell. Um and keep intact uh everything that was planned and and decided upon for the central business district uh from Mayor Pro Tem Bryant and a second from Commissioner Rowley. Unless there's any further debate, Commissioners, I'd ask that you vote.
Can I ask a question? I'm confused on the vote. Am I voting to reject?
Oh. The the motion, the motion.
Read something different at the top, so that's.
Yeah, if if we.
Can I reset? Cause I was confused, I was confused as well.
The motion to reject will be yes.
Okay.
So if we need to reset, i- if we need to reset, let's reset. But the motion and second are to reject. So voting yes uh would reject. And we do have a unanimous vote of yes, so the um the action i- is rejected. There won't, there won't be a a zone change. Thank you. Commissioners, we'll move on to new business where we have five items planned this evening. The first is request for approval of easement encroachment of Belmont Block Four, Lot Two. The address is five zero four West Nineteenth Street. And to advise on this, Mr. Les Chancho.
Hello again.
Hello.
So what we have here is five oh four West Nineteenth Street, Ms. Patsy Robertson, on the March twenty-ninth, put an easement uh encroachment application in with us um for what they're calling a concrete self-defense barrier. For they're they're having issues with neighbors using their driveway to access their yard. Um so we have a eleven-foot encroachment into our right-of-way. After fi- five feet and under, we can do those in-house and and sign those off. Anything over five foot, we have to bring before you to make a decision on.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. Chancho.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, uh questions on this?
The applicant is also here. If you have any questions for the applicant.
Oh, great. Yes, uh it's Mr. Robertson. Oh, okay. We'd be happy to have uh e- either or both of you come forward and 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 share with us. That's, let's see if we. Yeah, just just a moment. We'll see if we can get you a microphone, just so everyone can hear. But absolutely, you can speak from right there.
We encroached on the city property thinking it was our property after we had spoken to the city commission about what to do to protect ourselves from our neighbors who have become dangerous to us. Uh one day, Patchy was out picking up pecans that had fallen off our pecan tree. And she went down, picked one up, walked across a little ways across the heaping of the driveway. And it appeared to me that that neighbor tried to run over her. It was very traumatic to watch. We built the barrier then af- after we spoke to the city commission. And the girl next door went and got some of her friends, a parent friend, who came and defended her, letting us know that she has the right to use our driveway to enter her property. And uh it came across to me that our right to self-defense was being revoked. I had to go to the emergency room that night. Now then, as for the encroachment itself, that thing started in two thousand sixteen when they began to use our driveway. And I was concerned that they might try to back out. I mean, they might try to come out while we were backing out of our driveway and have a crash right in our own driveway. So I put up a sign that it was a private driveway, do not enter. Well, that made it worse, cause his daughter moved in with him. And that's when she almost ran over Patsy. We needed that barrier up there to keep her from running over us. Now then, the barrier itself is not built to be permanent. It is built to be temporary. I left a block in the bottom of it of wood so that it could be knocked out and a chain could be put through that hole. And it could be lifted out with a front loader or a backhoe and carried away. That's all I have to say about it.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Robertson. It 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 helps, uh it helps. So we appreciate you being here and and sharing that with us. Mayor Pro Tem, our Commissioners have uh I I I guess you've you've been over to the property before. Am I right or wrong on that or?
No, I have. I have been over there.
What what are your what are your thoughts on this?
I actually uh went over and discussed this with Mr. Robertson and his wife and actually Commissioner Madrid, uh when he was on the commission. We went over together and discussed this, and I realize he has a problem over the.
That's, yeah, speak right.
Is that better? Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay, is that better? Okay. I actually went over and discussed this with Mr. Robertson and his wife uh back some time ago and realized his situation. Uh I don't know the answer to it. I, you know, it's a neighbor between neighbor situation. And I'm not sure Mr. Morris, if this becomes a civil issue other than a city issue.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. No, I don't see it as a a civil issue. I did review the ordinances, and we do have an ordinance against placing obstructions in public ways. But I don't, it doesn't say right-of-way, so uh Mr. Holwalt's and I interpretation of that is that this doesn't run afoul of that ordinance. So, no, I I don't, you know, if we have the ability to improve encroachments for whatever reason that we choose. So I don't see it as a liability issue, and I don't see it conflicting with any ordinances. Uh it could be a policy issue, though, and and set the stage for future applicants, so something to think about.
Okay. Mr. Robertson, I know you have a temporary block there at this time, correct? Has that, has that uh solved the problem, or is it still, are you still having issues with it? Are you still having problems with this?
Yes, it did solve the problem. It's been working very well.
Okay, how are they coming on to your property if you've got that temporary block at on your driveway, to the west of your driveway? Okay, you got that temporary block to the west of your driveway, correct?
Right.
Okay, are they, how are they coming on to your property or through your property with that with that block there?
They can't come on our property now.
Okay, so how?
Not to access their property like they were doing.
Okay, so the problem at this point with the block there is you haven't had any, you don't, you aren't having any problem, correct?
No, there's been no problem since we put that block there.
Okay.
Now, that's not the only problem we've had with them. Their their dog got away one day and killed ours. They knocked three windows out of the trooper. Um mowing their lawn and trash goes through the windows.
Had you had, have you had any kind of conversation with your neighbors regarding them dran- driving through your driveway to get to their property?
I'm sorry?
In the past, have you had any conversation with your neighbors pertaining to them driving across your driveway to park in their front, in front of their house?
In two thousand sixteen, I have the papers here to prove this. I tried to talk to him. He snarled at me and turned around, went in his house. They always go in the house when I come outside. Now then, I wrote a letter to him asking him not to use our driveway and to clean up his yard and not try to be trying to make a salvage yard out of his property. The letter came back, even though it was registered, certified, it came back refused. That showed me that he's just too good for me. He just can't stop and talk to me.
Okay, my only, my only, my biggest concern with this is if we allow you to put something permanent there to stop them from driving across your driveway, then we have to let everybody else do the same thing if they come to the commission regarding this. So, you know, that that's our issue.
I've not, I never made it permanent. I made it with a block, a wood block in the bottom, so that it can be knocked out. And a chain can be put under it, and it can be lifted out with a front loader or a backhoe and removed. Very simple.
Okay, Mr. Robertson, how how long do you are you gonna keep this in place? I mean, the one you have already up there.
It's temporary as far as I'm concerned. It will be removed by by me hiring somebody to remove it as soon as his name is off that property next door. And he appears to be getting ready to move out now, but there's no for sale sign on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I feel like we're being asked to decide something we shouldn't have to be asked to decide, you know? Uh neighbors uh using their neighbor's driveway to drive across their own yard just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But I certainly feel for the Robertsons. Uh what a, what a predicament to be in. Any other questions, comments, Commissioners? What what do you wish to do here?
Mr. Morris, do you have any, do you have any thoughts on this?
Pro Tem, I don't.
Sorry to put that in your lap, but.
It's uh, yeah, unfortunate that we have to deal with it at this level, but I mean, they're allowed to apply for an easement and an encroachment, and that's what they've done. So I don't know how, why they couldn't get it solved between themselves. I think that would have been ideal, but uh I don't have anything to add. Thank you, sir.
This is for Mr. Holwalt. Uh do you see a problem with a barrier being there? I know kids come from uh from the school and go through there. You see any problems with that?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. When I originally started to think about this situation, tried to think about what was being proposed, I tried to equate it to potentially somebody having a brick mailbox. And then upon further reflection of that, started thinking about, well, a brick mailbox is typically behind a curb line. And so a curb is typically designed to redirect a traveling vehicle. It's definitely not something that we deal with every day and is not normal. But and he says it's temporary. He says there's a wood block there. If a vehicle runs off the road and hits that, I'm not sure what type of damage could be inflicted upon that vehicle or that driver intentionally or unintentionally, unintentionally. Um and so it's just it it's a tough situation. Like Mr. Morris said, it it would've been nice if the neighbors could have been able to resolve this amongst themselves. But unfortunately, we're not at that point at this at this time.
Can wheelchairs go through that?
There is, they did not impede on the sidewalk. Um so if if the wall itself was encroaching upon the sidewalk, uh we definitely would not allow that. Um but uh it's not blocking the sidewalk at this time, no ma'am.
Uh it seems to me like uh the barrier being there is is preventing these neighbors from really going back and forth with their issue. I think uh and and if we grant this, it's only temporary, um and we can terminate that at any time, correct?
You could certainly put um conditions on the the encroachment itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a, I have a question. Mr. Robertson, you mentioned that you felt like the the barrier is temporary, but did you, are the, are the uh what appears to be four-by-fours or two-by-fours, are they driven into the ground? And if so, how far are they in the ground?
Three-inch pipes, two of those and one, one-half inch pipe that only penetrated the thickness of the driveway. If it is nudged from east to west, they will break loose and be easy to pull out of there. So when the chain is wrapped around it, it will be easy to just lift it right off the driveway and take off with it.
Thank you for that.
I would like to comment about this.
I'm sorry?
If that barrier is removed and they injure or kill one of us driving over us there in that driveway, if you do not permit it to stay, what is the ci- the city's liability on that?
Would you like me to answer that?
I would love it if you would answer that, Mr. Morris.
I don't see us having any liability. Um any potential lawsuit or claim that would come would be covered by insurance in the event we did.
Mr. Robertson, it it's certainly not the intent of the commission or the city to 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 uh see you harmed in any way, shape or form. Um I do have another question, as I'm I'm leading to something in this. Um do you, can you tell us how, where your property line is in regards to the end of your driveway? Do you own any property um west of the driveway itself?
Our house is actually east of the the barrier. And uh she's the owner of it. We put it in her name to make the inheritance go down properly.
Okay, so do you own any property that is west of the driveways? What I'm trying to figure out is is there maybe.
No, ours is east of it. Wait a minute, yeah, it's east of it, east of it.
Your your home is east of the driveway? Yeah, and Mayor.
East of the barrier, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Uh Commissioner Porter, if you look on on packet page one sixteen, one hundred and sixteen, that's actually the the survey of his property.
I have pictures of the the.
So basically, his his driveway is the property line. Mr. Chancho.
Mayor, I, I just want to remind, uh, the commission that if, if they would've came in for a permit for this structure, we would've considered it a concrete fence wall. Um, and we would not have permitted this structure in the city right away. You can have a fence up to two feet up to your property line, not any, anywhere beyond it. So I just want to remind-
Okay, thank you for that.
Can I make the hard motion?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, as hard as it is, um, I don't want to sit up presidents here, so I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, we deny the request.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, deny the request for easement encroachment, uh, from Commissioner David Bryant.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second now to that motion. Um, it's been moved and seconded that we deny the request for approval of easement encroachment of Belmont Block Four, Lot Two. Address is four zero, um, uh, excuse me, five zero four West Nineteenth Street. Unless there's any further debate, and I'm not hearing or seeing any, so Commissioners, please vote.
Mayor, does that mean they have to remove that then?
Yes, yes. So, yes, I was about to tell you guys how you were voting yes or no and all that kind of stuff. You've got this figured out tonight. Uh, that's, uh, seven in favor of denying the request for the easement, uh, encroachment. The motion is, uh, are the, the motion to deny has carried. Mr. and Mrs. Robertson, uh, this denial of, of, uh, approving the easement encroachment in, in no way, uh, uh, means that our hearts don't go out to you on this situation. It's just that, um, there's, we've got a bad situation and, and, and if we were to, if this commission were to grant you, uh, that easement encroachment, it, it, uh, it doesn't really make it better. Uh, and, and it sets a precedent. And so this was a tough spot that, that your commissioners were in and, and frankly, I, I'm, I'm sorry for you. I'm also disappointed that, that this commission would have to, uh, make such a determination between neighbors. I hope that it can be worked out. Question is, how long does he have to remove it?
Mayor, Mayor, Pro Temp and Commissioners, and we can certainly work with him. I, we understand that, uh, Mr. Robertson's health and we'll, we'll work with him.
If you didn't hear that, Mr. Robertson, uh, you're, you're gonna be, you're gonna be given, uh, considerable grace and the city's gonna work with you on, uh, the amount of time that you would need to remove that.
Can I, one more? I would encourage you to, uh, speak with Mr. Rice right there. And if you have any more issues, to please contact him and let him see if he can't kind of mediate.
Okay, looks like the discussion is happening with, uh, Chief of Police now, so that's, that's great. We'll move on in our agenda, uh, Commissioners. Uh, item two under new business is request for approval to hire up to an additional four summer interns for the City of Clovis Summer Youth Program. And, uh, our Parks and Rec Director has had a long, long afternoon, long night, uh, and is with us. Mr. Russell Hooper, we'll give you the floor.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, Pro Temp Commissioners, I appreciate y'all, yeah, appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to come over here and speak. Um, as you'll know, about a month or so ago, I believe, we came and asked for some additional funding for the program that wasn't included in the grant. Um, we kind of discussed at the time that they would have, uh, we were hoping to get up to twenty-five kids to involve in this summer program. And I believe Commissioner Polly, you and several others made the comment, we wish it could be more. Um, well, fortunately, right now, I didn't check this week, last week we were at eighty-five kids. We think we're gonna hit a hundred. So basically, what we're requesting is to get some more summer intern help. Um, there's gonna be zero financial impact on this, so we're not asking really for a budget change. We just want approval. There's in the current recreation funds, since we were short-staffed a good chunk of the year, we have some additional funding in there. We would just like to be, get, request approval to use this to hire some, summer interns. Questions, comments?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Casaus, a second from Commissioner Garza. Unless there's any further debate or discussion, Commissioners, please vote.
That we're having to hire.
Yeah, I do too.
It's a good problem to have. It is.
It's a good problem to have, yes.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, real quick and then I'll let you go. Mr. Hooper, I'm sorry. Um, there are certain sys, uh, instances where, uh, in New Mexico where students, um, below the age of sixteen can work. Is this one of those instances? Uh, I think the state of New Mexico says down to fourteen years old.
I believe on this one, we've set, said it at sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. That's all of it?
Did you have some?
Thank you.
And Mayor, um, Mayor, Pro Temp and Commissioners, if I may, I'd like to thank Kiwanis. They donated three hundred and fifty dollars to the program today. We've had various, um, organizations throughout the community who are donating and supporting the program in various ways, so thank you to them.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. Uh, Commissioners, we had a motion and a second. If you would please vote. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Appreciate that. And-
Thank you.
I echo the comments from, uh, the commission. Really excited about the Summer Youth Program. Uh, excited that, uh, a hundred or so kids are, are gonna benefit from really quality programming and time in our parks. Next is item three under new business, request for approval of appointment of one City of Clovis representative to serve on the Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority. Um, Ms. Burrows, are you gonna advise on that?
If, if you like, Mayor. Um, so three representatives serve on the Water Utility Authority for the Clovis community. And currently, Mayor Morris, Mayor Pro Temp Bryant and Commissioner Garza are the appointees. Their terms are for two years. And Mayor Pro Temp Chris Bryant's term on the authority expires at the end of May and the position is open for appointment, reappointment by the city commission.
Okay, thank you for that. I, and I appreciate you letting me call on you to, to advise on that one. I, I wasn't completely confident if it was only Mayor Pro Temp's, uh, position on the authority board that we would be discussing or not. And so thanks for, for clarifying that. Commissioners, with what's going on with, uh, the, uh, Water Utility Authority and the amount of funding that we've had, uh, flow in, I, I would respect your, um, your decision to, to maybe make a change there, but continuity, uh, on that board right now is, is so important. And Mayor Pro Temp Bryant serves as the secretary on that board and does a, does a fantastic job, familiar with the project, familiar with the administrator and staff. And, and, uh, I'd sure like to see you, uh, keep him there.
I make a motion to reappoint Chris Bryant to the board.
Okay, motion, uh, from Commissioner David Bryant to, uh, appoint Mayor Pro Temp Bryant to the, uh, Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority Board representing the City of Clovis there.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Casaus. Commissioners, please vote. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Temp Bryant.
Mayor, I want to thank the commission for their support. I've enjoyed being on this committee and, uh, look forward to continuing to serve for the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item four under new business. It is request for approval of policies and procedures for retail manual. Mr. Haworth?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Pro Temp and Commissioners. Um, the City of Clovis Lead a Task Force, uh, has, has obviously been very busy in, uh, working on the ordinances as well as working on these policies and procedures. And so on April the twelfth, uh, of this, this year, they presented to the City of Clovis Economic Incentive Board what policies and procedures that they had come up with to basically outline what, how we're gonna interpret and utilize our leada for retail funds. Um, the Economic Incentive Board did approve, uh, the, the proposed policies and procedures unanimously, unanimously. And so, uh, I thought I would just kind of hit some of the highlights for you this evening, uh, the major points. Um, if you, if you've read them and actually compared them to our, uh, policies and procedures that we have set up for industrial projects, uh, they look very similar. And so we wanted to take something that we already had in place and just kind of revise it to meet the, the needs for this particular, um, application process. Um, if you turn to, uh, packet page one thirty, uh, you'll notice on that, I'm not gonna start at the beginning, like I said, I'm just gonna hit the highlights. Um, we talked about the retail gap, uh, impact analysis. That's a key component to all the policies and procedures that are laid out in front of you this evening. Uh, everything is based off, the decisions are based off of that retail gap analysis and how a proposed project particularly fits into there. Um, so just keep that in mind. And if you go to packet page one thirty-one, which is page ten of the, um, procedures, policies and procedures, underneath the retail project criteria, this is where it really lays out what our incentives and our incentives, it could potentially look like. Um, on line thirty-nine, you'll notice that we cap the, um, value of the project at fifty percent of what, uh, the project is worth. So, uh, the only items that qualify underneath the act itself are, are for the purchase, lease, grant, construction, reconstruction, improvements or other acquisition or conveyance of lands, buildings or other infrastructure. So those particular items are the only things that a developer could come to us to looking to be incentivized upon. And so, um, for example, if, if it's a million dollars to purchase the land, uh, the maximum that they could receive based off this program is fifty percent of that or is five hundred thousand dollars. How they could get reimbursed basically for that is, uh, under, uh, is up to two and a half percent of the taxable gross receipts generated by the sales receipts from the retail project as evidenced by proof of payment to the state of New Mexico. Uh, so the max they can get is that two and a half percent. And that's up to a ten-year term. So depending on how well the business done, does and performs, um, so we could come up with, with an agreement that says ten years, they could potentially earn that all back in two years if they perform really well. Um, if they don't perform as well, uh, they could hit that ceiling of up to ten years, uh, as we look at those particular projects. And of course, we wanted to, since each project is unique and we evaluate them on a case-by-case situation, um, we wanted to, of course, leave in there other eligible incentives as may be recommended. And so that kind of gave us some, some flexibility, uh, with, with, uh, the language itself, but with our primary focus being on reimbursing gross receipts taxed that they generate, uh, on the backend of the project. Um, turning over to packet page one thirty-two, there's pass fail criteria that we set up in there. Uh, so base, simple stuff, either you can pass this criteria or you can't. Um, and so we'd move on to the next part, which is some of the retail scored evaluation, uh, that you'd see on packet page one thirty-three. Pointing out, on, on the scoring criteria, you notice on there for item three, we tried to, uh, tailor that criteria itself to, um, the level of retail gap that is out there. And so if the proposed business that's coming in can fill in anywhere between zero and four million dollars of that gap and they're at twenty-five percent of that range, then they would have the potential to receive ten points and then so forth, uh, as that project scales up and the number, the gap that they're, uh, could potentially fill. So, um, this is really just kind of some highlights of the, those policies and procedures. If you have any specific questions, I'm certainly more than happy to answer. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that explanation. And Mr. Haworth, thank you for all the time and effort that you've put in on that, in particular, toward the end there with the leada task force. I know that, uh, you did a, well, you and Ms. Burrows and, uh, everyone did a lot of work to, uh, provide that task force with the information they needed to debate and make their decisions on what the, uh, recommendations to this commission would be, or rather to the EIB, uh, who has recommended this to this commission. Um, what I really like about this is that, um, you have a, you have a would-be economic development project, uh, retailer coming in, filling a gap in our, our retail offering, has the ability to earn their own incentive. We're not going into the city coffers and handing money to a prospect and hoping it works out. We're, we're setting them up, uh, we're structuring a deal for them where they have the ability to earn their own incentive. The citizens never overpay because they're only going to earn the re, the rebate, uh, on the GRT that they earn. And, and as they do that, uh, the, the city, uh, coffers and, and GRT tax base i- is benefiting and the community is benefiting from, you know, an improved retail offering, uh, in, in the local community, which has, has benefits of creating jobs and, uh, adding, uh, arguably to quality of life, having goods and services readily available in our community. So, um, it's an investment. I mean, if we're going to rebate a portion of the gross receipts that we would, uh, ordinarily take or collect, um, this is, uh, this is not giving money away. This is an investment that we're making in our local economy. Any thoughts, comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can I ask a question first, just-
Yes.
For clarification?
Commissioner Polly.
On the retail project criteria, packet page one thirty-one, where it talks about the value of the project not to exceed fifty percent for the purchase or lease, so does that mean if somebody comes in and leases the old Sears building, uh, they can, and they do no other improvements in there, that they can receive fifty percent of the, their lease payments back?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that is, that is allowed underneath the state statute.
Okay, and that's determined, what, over the, the timeframe of the lease? That, how do you-
No, the value of the lease.
Mm-hmm.
So if, it, it, it's gonna be based on, we, they'll have to provide that to us.
So-
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have to get, just like most companies don't provide us their tax receipts that they're paying.
Right.
They'll have to provide us their lease agreement.
Okay.
And, I mean, and you're, you're probably wondering, or maybe that was part of your question, well, how long, right? How long could they receive?
Yeah, was it, is it, like, if their lease is a ten-year lease-
Yeah.
Then we take the value of their monthly payments times the ten years and that's what they're eligible to receive back.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, right. And, yeah. Any other, of course, we have a motion and a second, but any other comments or debate?
Well, I want to make a comment and I have a question. Um, of course, I love this. I think it's fantastic. Um, I'm still curious and, and it may be how green I am at the seat, but, um, I'm curious as to when we can see the, the gap analysis.
You can, you can see it tonight.
Is it, is it in the packet that we just missed it?
I don't think, I don't think it's in our packet tonight, but, um, the, uh, the gap analysis that, that at this point, retail strategies has performed for us. It may be that we have someone else do that down the road, who knows? But, uh, the gap analysis is, um, it's in our possession. We can, uh-
But that's not publicly accessible, right? That's, it's only accessible to the commission?
No, it, it, I have it. I mean, you're more than anybody's point of welcome to come and see it and-
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
And Mayor, Mayor, Pro Temp and Commissioners, uh, we actually had a conversation today with Mr. Bontrager and said, how difficult is it to update that gap analysis? And he says it's not difficult at all. So it's, it's definitely something that they can do it, do for us while they're under contract.
Outstanding. Thanks. Any other questions? Debate? Okay, we had a motion from Commissioner Casaus. The second came from Commissioner Garza. Commissioners, please vote. The vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. Thank you. Last item under new business this evening is request for approval of position classification review, employee benefits and compensation study. Mr. Haworth?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Pro Temp and Commissioners. Uh, the last, uh, compensation study that we did was, uh, back in twenty twenty. Uh, since that, uh, time and since we have completed that study, we've obviously taken steps to, uh, implement it and we have successfully done that to the hundred percent mark. But some things have changed since that was completed. Obviously, uh, minimum wage has, has increased. Um, there's been some demand in some professions, uh, especially in the public s- safety sector, uh, that we want to make sure that we are still competitive with. And so, um, we thought it would be a good idea to go out and take a look at the compensation study again. Um, I titled it incorrectly. I apologize for that. We are not gonna be reviewing the employee benefits as part of this. Uh, that really hasn't changed since the last time, uh, we actually did it. Um, so we're just gonna be studying actually the, the compens- So we're just going to be studying actually the compensation side of, of the, our salaries and how those potentially look. So I reached out to S Resources, and that's who has provided these services to us in the past. So he's very familiar with our job classification. He's very familiar with the cities that we have used in the past for the analysis. We use communities that are our size. We use communities that are within our region, including communities in Texas. So we try to look at what our, our, our competition essentially is for employees. So we did have this in the budget previously or for, in this fiscal year. The cost is 16,000 plus gross receipts tax. We had, we had more than that in the budget itself, so it's not something that we need to make a budget change. Once we have the results of this, obviously, we'll go back, look at what we have in place, see if we need to make any adjustments. And then it'll allow us to establish what those starting salaries would be for, for our employees and whether or not we need to make any adjustments to those starting wages as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you may have.
Appreciate that. Mayor Protem, quest, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, what questions do you have? Comments, debate?
I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Paula, a second from Mayor Protem Bryant. Any further debate? Hearing and seeing none. Commissioners, please vote. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Hawalt, did you say what the expected timeline was on that?
I do. I think it's six to eight weeks to complete it.
Six weeks?
No.
Eighteen.
Six to eighteen weeks.
Six to eighteen.
Six. I'm going to go ahead and go with, look at the schedule that's actually in the proposal and go with eighteen rather than off the top of my head.
Okay, okay. All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to reports of boards, officers, and committees. We did, we've got the retail strategies update earlier this evening, although at this point it feels like that might have been yesterday. I don't know. The, the monthly investment.
Christian Meyer.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, Chief.
Could we request a moment of public comment?
Yes.
Before the?
Before the?
The adjutant?
Yes, absolutely. Please.
I thought it was just you, Chief, not all of you.
No, it's even better. We got, we got the whole, the whole crew. Chief Rice?
You got good representation tonight. You know, coming from me, I'm newcomer and appreciate the shout-outs today during the State of the City address that, that's very flattering. But our department is a very good department. We have a very professional department that does a lot of things. And when I say our department, this is us. We all work together. I mean, the Yana Lassacottel fire was one of the biggest things we have seen in this area where nobody called each other and said, hey, will you get out here or can you do this? We were there. Mr. Hawalt showed up after with us too and got to make some inspections. And only those that were there realized what they did. I mean, there's officers out there, firemen, talking about being covered with the water from the lake. And we'll leave it at that. And, you know, the rest of us got the smoke and the, the, the ash and the dust, things like this. But I want to tell you how much I appreciate allowing me to work here. Because I come from areas where, yes, we have worked before together, all of emergency services working together. But whenever I see a team go out with such a mass fire like this, everything from our emergency management coordinator, our firefighters, Cannon Air Force Base, that there are people out there, the helicopters, it was a coordinated effort and concentrated effort that saved a lot of property, saved a lot of lives. And I asked my commander, who's standing behind me waiting patiently, to write up something that evening, let everybody know how much I appreciated what they did, and he excelled. And I would like him to present it again tonight.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Captain Romero.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners. I think they're mostly surprised that I know how to write, sir. Well, they're edible. If you follow the newest thoughts on Marines.
I knew it was wrong.
I'm Captain Romero of the Clovis Police Department, though it's not typical for a city employee to stand before you and make a small statement at a commission meeting. It's kind of essential today. Whether it's teamwork or the greater good, whatever you want to call it, just a few short weeks ago was on full display. On April 29th, about 1:14 in the afternoon, Clovis Police Department Dispatch received a call for a fire on State Road 245, which we usually call Yano, near County Road M, which we call Wheaton, of a small van. With our dry weather, our lovely New Mexico wind, and the day turned out to become very interesting very quickly. The billowing smoke and changing wind created danger for homes, daycares, the hospital, Gaddis Jr. High School, and our public as a whole because of all the grassland we tend to have. In the midst of the chaos, something really awesome happened. Individual groups and agencies in a seemingly effortless fashion forged an amazing defense and offense against this fast-moving, fuel-hungry fire. Fire units from outside of Clovis dedicated themselves to protecting our community. Corporations assisted with tools we don't typically have here, and they brought us quite a more swift end to this fire. Law enforcement, city and county resources, they worked together for the evacuations and other security issues. And I'd like to list a couple of those groups. I have the agencies, the businesses, and everybody else that tried to keep everybody safe that day. For fire agencies, the Clovis Police, or Clovis Fire Department, he keeps trying to hire me for some reason. It gets me all confused.
You missed your, your appointment.
Oh, no, there's always time. The Clovis Fire Department, Cannon Air Force Base Fire Department, Rancho Fire Department, County Line Fire Department, Texaco Fire Department, Pleasant Hill Fire Department, Melrose Fire Department, Farwell Fire Department, Grady Fire Department, Broadview Fire Department, Tooncary Fire Department, and the Curry County Fire Marshal. Majority of those departments I named are all volunteers. They have an attachment to us because we're, we're the giant place amongst all that. But they came without so much as a whisper. For law enforcement, we have the Clovis Police Department, the Curry County Sheriff's Office, New Mexico State Police, and our dispatch centers with the county and the city. At city and county government, we had the Clovis-Curry County Emergency Management, the City of Clovis Public Works Department, and without those guys being able to put in barriers in a moment's notice and start cutting lines in the dirt to keep that fire from jumping, we would have been in a heck of a state that day. Clovis Area Transit System on standby, waiting to move people. City administration, because there's always going to be a bill to pay. And the Curry County Roads Department. As far as businesses, Dairy Farmers of America, and that sounds really weird that we've got dairy farmers involved in this, but those trucks can carry water. It's kind of like milk. And the necessity for water in such large degrees during that event. I'm not a fire guy, but the amount of work and effort and continuing pushing and not having to get those apparatus out of the scene to go fill up and then come back, to have that availability of something like a giant milk truck full of water, it's, it's awesome. Aerotech and Kromen Industries. Aerotech, without those two helicopters and Kromen, which was a helicopter that was based out of our little airport, and the wonderful substance they dropped on the fire, we'll call it water. We, we know better. All these people, they were just an amazing godsend. Now, other groups, the Clovis Municipal Schools, the Veteran Foreign Wars, but we would be failing, all of us. If I didn't mention the numerous citizens, we had people showing up, delivering water, sports drinks, snacks, food. And the whole of this last group wasn't called upon. We didn't need to ask them. They showed up. Their dedication, their community, and their neighbors, they stepped forward into this breach that isn't typically theirs to have. And every now and once in a while, we have to ask ourselves what makes this great? What makes this something we want to come back and do every day? And it's this teamwork, this willingness for a neighbor to come to the aid of a neighbor. And for many of us, sure, it's our job, but it doesn't make it any less remarkable. Throughout my life, I've understood that we, as people, we tend to work best when we're tested to our limits, when we're aiding the people we care about and those comrades we have to our left and to our right. We've got some great people, and I just really wanted to say it aloud. So thank you for your attention, and thank you for your couple of moments of time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
You know, I, I thank, I thank all of you and all the staff and everybody that came out to help with that fire. But, you know, Commissioner Porter was saying it a few minutes ago, that's what Clovis is all about, not really having to call on people, they just show up and help out. And I think that's what makes Clovis and our community and our citizens special. So thank you.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
Well said, and, and once again, thank you to all of you for, for what you did that day and also for taking this time to share that with us. Commissioners, we are in reports, and it's time for the monthly investment report from our finance director, Ms. Malonson.
Thank you, Captain Romero. Tough act to follow there. All right. April 30th, we started the month with $57.3 million, ended at $57.9 million cash. A very quick overview, General Fund One, $6 million, Solid Waste Fund Two, $2.9 million. Our Wastewater Fund Ten, $4.4 million. Our Economic Development Fund, $64, $4 million. Our Water Quarter Percent Fund, $66, $5.9 million. And still, our American Rescue Plan Fund Ninety Four at $4.7 million. Based on our money, we have $32.5 million in our local banks and $25.3 million in our state pool. Our interest for the month was $5,300. For the 10 months is $41,000. State pool is up from last month of .1249 to .2903. So we are seeing an increase there. And our gross receipts report did come in today. We are 6.5% above this time last year and 31% above this time two years ago. So I think we are over COVID. And for the year, we are about 23% above budget and an increase of 2,246 reporters on our industry report, the majority of those, of course, still being in our retail area. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, that's an exciting report, and we couldn't, couldn't be happier about the, the direction the city's finances are going. And I think it's, you know, it's appropriate that we're doing the, the compensation study, and it's appropriate that we would prioritize available funds and resources for public safety. And I know we have 14 departments, but we have two that get between us and dangerous things without blinking an eye. And so I'm glad to, glad to see the, the funds, the finances go in the direction they are. Comments or questions for Ms. Malonson, Commissioners?
Thanks for the report.
Thank you for the report. Good job. Appreciate it. Would someone like to report on the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board that met, or the meeting that happened on May 10th?
Just like Ms. Malonson said, things are looking good. And we have six events coming up, and they all look very good. I think we're going to see more gross receipts coming up, probably by the end of July. So I'm very positive about that. We had $129,000 request for these events, and we recommended 115, which you guys approved already. But I think everything is moving in a positive way.
Great. Thank you for that, and thanks for your service on Lodger's Tax. I guess we'll probably come right back to you for the planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning.
Yeah, planning and zoning, which happened on May 11th. You were busy that week.
It, it keeps coming up with this, some changes, and I think I mentioned that before with these cannabis shops, they're going to be looking for places to start businesses, and it's going to be pretty busy with that. So this is not the end of it. This is the beginning of it. But I think it's nothing else we can do on these things. Just look at case by case. We had some replat requests, so the mall is looking like it's going to be busy. And our retail strategies mentioned that, and again, it's a positive thing. Carports is another thing that we're dealing with, and again, it's a positive thing because everybody's trying to be in compliance and do the right things and make Clovis look a little better than what we have with those metal carports going away. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Garza. Appreciate that report. Senior Services, I'll take that one. Senior Services Committee met on Thursday, May 12th. We, items for discussion included the naming of the new senior center. And what we, what we did there was we discussed the, all of the names that were suggested by the public and then voted on, and we determined that we would, gosh, I am struggling to remember exactly what we did with that.
You're bringing a recommendation to the next commission meeting?
That, that recommendation is coming, yes, that's coming, okay. So we, we voted as a senior services committee to name the new senior center, Hillcrest Senior Life Center. And so you're going to see that come before you in the form of a recommendation from the senior services committee. The other thing that we discussed with, that I was mixing up, is we had a discussion regarding art in public places. So there is, so there are some funds available in the, in the budget for the new senior center that, that can be used for art. So just imagine the art hanging on the walls within the newly constructed senior center. And there's some decisions that need to be made on that by the committee so that recommendations can be made to you. And we appointed a subcommittee to, to, to meet and have a look at that, that art. Vice Chairperson Donna Labatt, Member Coslet, Member Wen, and Member Porter from the committee are all going to, not Commissioner Porter, it's a, it's a, it's a different gentleman, Mr. Porter, who's on senior services, and that. Potter.
Potter.
The gentleman's name is Potter. It's been such a long day. I wasn't all that good when it started, so. Potter.
Keep going.
All right. Very good. And as was reported last time, I reported on senior services, we have changed the meeting time, so we'd love it if you could join us at 1:30 PM on the second Thursday of odd months throughout the year. And so our next meeting will be July 14th. Next, update regarding Economic Development Week. That's got my name beside it. I agreed to give a report there, although I'm not sure I'm equipped to do so at this point, out of energy. But we did have Economic Development Week celebrated within our city last week. The Eastern Plains Council of Governments, Raymond Mondragon, really spearheaded that, did a great job of pulling in some, some, some horsepower from Santa Fe. We had Deputy Secretary of Workforce Solutions, Yolanda Montoya Cordova, and, and staff in for a discussion and a walking tour of downtown, although I think the wind was so bad and ran out of time, they didn't do much of a walking tour. But then there was a reception held with the Deputy Secretary, which I was able to attend, and I think several of us did, and it was just great to, to, you know, get acquainted with her and exchange ideas. Then the Tuesday of that week, Deputy- Then, the Tuesday of that week, Deputy Secretary of Economic Development Department, John Clark, was in town for a roundtable discussion, and I believe he did lunch out at Plateau with several folks. Anyone from the commission attend that?
Yes, I did.
You did, yeah.
It was really good. They showed us the slides of what Plateau is doing and how, all that they're progressing. They, we had a tour of the facility, and lunch was excellent. There was a lot of people there.
Outstanding. Well, thanks for attending that. I wasn't able to make it to that lunch, but it was great to have Deputy Secretary John Clark in, you know, host him in our city and have a roundtable discussion with him. And then, lastly, at least from my memory, the next day, Wednesday of the week, we had the Deputy Secretary of Tourism Department, Annette V. Hill, in for roundtable discussion. Well, I guess there was a reception and activities the evening before, but then roundtable discussion, and then you mentioned earlier the trip to the zoo. Several of us made it out to the zoo and had a great time showing the Deputy Secretary around our beloved zoo, and then we did lunch and had, just had a great discussion about tourism and the possibilities for increasing tourism to events and the like here within our city. Would anyone like to fill in the blanks?
Well, she was impressed that the Fort Sunder schools were visiting the zoo at the time. Of course, the kids fell in love with the mayor, they wanted to take his picture, one little boy even wanted his autograph.
Got a celebrity here.
She was very impressed with the zoo. I think her best animal was the giraffe. Giraffe was giving kisses to her.
Tried to. She was shy in a way, but she wasn't, she didn't want, yeah.
But it was a good experience for her, you know, to come and see the zoo, and I think she was very impressed. Her and, who was the other gentleman? Was it Lansing?
Lansing Adams.
Lansing Adams, Director within the Department of Tourism. Yeah, boy, it was great, you know, and it was just great to have these folks, these cabinet-level folks from the state, out in our city, you know, having conversation with us. Those conversations result in a greater understanding of, you know, perhaps how to go after state funding for the various agencies that they represent, and you never know when those relationships are going to, you know, bear fruit. And not that you enter into it hoping to, you know, gain something down the road, but it's just, it's just good for our community to get that attention from the state agencies. Any other comments on that?
Well, the positive time about that was that they are very, they were encouraging for us to get some funding from them, and I think that's going to be a big possibility. One of those possibilities is helping the event center to put some stalls there and be able to bring some more activity to that area.
Yeah, the county attended, we had county representation at the roundtable discussions, and that did come up a lot, the idea that they could have the possibility to apply for some grant funding to build livestock pavilion and horse stalls and such at the event center, enriching that asset and the opportunities that it provides. Ms. Burrows, you had a comment?
I was just going to add that yesterday, we heard from the Chamber of Commerce, we partnered with the, the city's partnered with the county and the chamber on the fiscal year 23 cooperative marketing program through the tourism department, and the announcement was that they were awarding $80,000, and we'd all put together $40,000, so it's a total of $120,000 for tourism advertising, marketing for the community, so another great partnership. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thanks for pointing that out.
Can I add to that? I had lunch with Ernie today, and she was telling me that just in two days, they have had seven countries visit the museum. They had China, Germany, France, Spain. I can't remember the others, but that is awesome, I think, that we're known worldwide.
It is awesome, and it's proof that, you know, we can.
Marketing does work.
Yeah, we can draw it in, and we do have opportunity with tourism. And just imagine, all of those folks got to see that video down in the basement of the chamber, right, Commissioner?
Yes.
Were you going to tell them how impressed you were that I was in that?
I was so surprised.
You didn't.
He said, "Did you see the film down there, the video?" I said, "Yeah, I've seen it a ton of times." He said, "Well, did you see who was in it?" I said, "Well, I know Vi Petty and Orman Petty," and he said, "Look at it again." So, I looked at it again, I said, "Mayor, it's you." I did not realize he was in the video.
Now you know why he was getting autograph requests.
But he was 16 years old, I think.
Yeah, oh, yes, I was, yep, yep, that was 16. Wow, ouch. Yeah, I'll get you, you know, if you could just let me finish the meeting, I'd be happy to get you autographed. No. Point of privilege, since we're off the rails and it's a long meeting anyway, I just, I have to share how excited I am about new business item for this evening and the procedures manual and getting this much closer to being able to execute on retail development. That's been a two-year effort by a lot of people, and actually, why I wanted to bring that up is Deputy Secretary of Economic Development Department, John Clark. It was great to see him and shake his hand and meet him in person. The first time I met him and talked to him was on a video meeting prior to the interim committee meetings in late 2020, when we were working our tails off trying to get traction for what was going to become Senate Bill 49. And I, everybody I would talk to around the state, I'd tell them what we were doing, they'd say, "You know, that seems like a good idea, I'm not sure what your chances are, maybe you ought to talk to so-and-so." And so, I just sort of bounced off of people, and I finally got to Representative Patty Lundstrom, who's a pretty heavy hitter in the legislature, right? And so, I get ahold of her, tell her what I'm doing, tell her what I'm, what we're working on, and she says, "I don't have time to talk to you right now." And she says, "But I'm going to send you an email and invite you to a Zoom meeting." And so, she did, and it turned into, she wanted John Clark, Deputy Secretary of Economic Development Department, in the meeting, and so I had a Zoom meeting, I sat in a small conference room over at City Hall and met with Patty Lundstrom, and John Clark presented what Senate Bill 49 was going to become, and Patty Lundstrom was very abrupt with me, and she just said, she listened, John Clark listened very politely, gave some input. Patty, Representative Lundstrom said, "You have my support, Mayor, give me your phone number." And so, I rattled off my mobile phone number to her, and she says, "I've got other things to do, but you're going to get a call from Legislative Council today, and you need to present the bill to the Interim Committee on Economic Development and Economic and Rural Development." And they were meeting in like, I don't know, like the next week or something like that. And sure is everything. John Clark said, you know, "Nice meeting you on video and all that stuff." And a couple hours later, I get a call from Peter Kovnat, Legislative Council, and he introduces himself and says, "Well, Mayor, I don't know what you did, but Patty Lundstrom says you're getting a bill. What do you want it to say?" And so, I said, "That's how it works? You need me to tell you what it's going to say?" And he says, "Yes." And so, it was a few hours that day of going back and forth and going back to my team, my support, Mr. Hawalt, Ms. Burrows, and as well as our lobbyist, John Ryan, and others, and we got a bill which we presented in the, which I presented in the interim committee, and it was that day that we got sponsorship for it, and it took off. And so, John Clark was instrumental in what you just approved tonight. So, yeah, it was nice to have him in Clovis last week and shake his hand and say hello. Could we have a report on the Parks, Recreation, and Beautification Committee?
I can do that, Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, and by the way, congratulations on the chairmanship of that.
Well, thank you, that was going to be my first comment, that you are now looking at the new Chairperson of the Parks and Rec Committee, and Commissioner Casals is the Vice Chairperson. We discussed some recommendations regarding the Parks restructuring. They're going to create kind of a hierarchy within the Parks and Rec Department. It was going to allow with, kind of help employee retention and morale, because people know they can kind of move up the chain of command within the Parks and Recreation Department, which I think is a wonderful idea. We discussed the AYSO soccer fields there that are on the corner of Norris and 14th, and we've given them another extension to form a Board of Directors and give us a, you know, a timeline of when they think they are going to start the program up again. We also got some updates on park projects by Mr. Hooper. They're going to resurface Potter Pool, I believe they've started working on that, and it should be ready by Memorial Day, it's going to look very nice. We've got the Summer Youth Program, which we heard about tonight. We've got some, we had some playground updates, but I can't for the life of me remember what they were. Playgrounds are open. We've got the pickleball grant that is still out there, we're waiting to hear from that. And we also had some citizens come that they were a little concerned about the condition of Harris Baseball Field, so I know the city is definitely looking into that to make sure that everything is safe and in working order. That is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Paula. Appreciate that, and once again, congrats to you on being the Chairperson of the committee. Congrats, Commissioner Chris House, on being Vice Chair, and appreciate all of you for your service on boards and committees. Next, I will give the State of the City address. It only takes like an hour. I'm just going to run through it real fast, how's that sound? No, I did the State of the City this afternoon, quite an experience. Appreciate the support of everyone on the commission, the department directors that attended, and it is truly, you know, I'm only 45 years old, but I think probably serving as Mayor of Clovis is going to be like the coolest thing I've ever done in my life, even when I'm an old man. So, I really enjoy this, and I'm working hard at it, and I appreciate that everyone was interested in hearing what I had to say about the state of our city, and obviously, I feel like we're really in a good place and going in a good direction, and appreciate everyone's effort and support. Future agenda items to mention?
The only items I have at the moment, Mayor, Mayor Proton and Commissioners, we will have TIP Strategies with us to talk about the economic development plan and give you an update. There'll be boots on the ground for a couple of days then, so they'll have a meet with you. They have the Contract for Services with the Curry Soil and Water Conservation, that's the contract that you had a year ago, it'll be coming back to you. The Senior Life Center that you spoke about a little while ago, and a couple of board vacancies. We're looking for somebody for Public Works Committee for District Two.
Public Works Committee, District Two. Great, yeah, it'd be great if we could have someone from District Two join that committee and help out with the, help out with things. Well, thank you for that, Ms. Burrows. You mentioned TIP Strategies, or, yeah, TIP Strategies. Just wanted to once again state that there's a survey out to the public that the public is invited to complete. You can find that survey in the press release sections on the city's website. Announcement of date, time, and place of board and city commission meetings. The Public Works Committee will meet at 8:30 AM Wednesday, May 25th, here in the North Annex. The Eastern New Mexico Water Utility Authority will meet at 3:00 PM Thursday, May 26th next week. Come join us for that one. That is going to be a monster of a meeting. The Finance Committee meeting leading up to that board meeting was three hours?
Three hours.
Yeah, we have a lot going on with the authority. We'll be happy to report on that following that board meeting. We have a special city commission meeting at 5:15 Thursday, May 26th, here in the North Annex, and City Hall will be closed for Memorial Day on May 30th. Our next regular city commission meeting is at 5:15 on Thursday, June 2nd. We are adjourned.